Okay, so we'll reopen the regular meeting of the Clickedat County Commissioners for July 30th, and we will start with the Public Works Director Jeff Hunter and County Engineer Seth Scorola. Good morning Seth.
Good morning.
No. Okay.
Did we skip that?
Or I just wanted to point it out that on my sheet, the Veterans Advising Board is first.
Okay, I was looking at the wrong sheet. Yes.
Yeah, no, I have no problem.
Thank you for that correction. I had the wrong sheet. So we're we're going to start with the Veterans Advisory Board. We have no one in the room, just you guys. Yeah.
This was a recommendation by the board, correct? I think it was, but I'm not sure. But I'm I'm fine with the applicant.
Yeah, and I know the applicant. I'm happy that he applied. Yeah.
And it's not my district, so.
Yeah. No, he'll be a great asset, and I want to thank him for applying. And it's really crucial that we have citizens apply for these boards. So thank you for stepping up.
Especially that one.
And he's younger, so which is not.
Versity.
Yeah, we see younger people getting involved, and that's good.
Okay, thank you. Now we can move on to Public Works. Sorry, Public Works.
Been one of those days, indeed, for being patient.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, we have a few pay estimates on your agenda today. One to Interstate Concrete, which is American Rock Products for the Bickleton Area Pavement. That's for four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three. Another pay estimate to Midway Underground for one million, fifty thousand dollars for the Sundale Project. Both of those are grant-funded projects. So it's not like the it's not coming out of the local budget. And pay estimate five to Hale Construction and the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the Fairground Sail Barn. With that, go ahead.
All right, on the construction end of things, the Bickleton Area Paving. Last thing, sign installation. It sounds like today they did receive the signs, so they should be out there installing those as we speak. Sundale Old Eight, work continues on the excavations and embankment construction, culvert installations, and placing base rock as they get to upgrade to the proper grade. White plastic edge lines, the work was completed last Thursday. On road design, Sunnyside Road Overlay, still working through a few issues with stormwater and rest of the design work. Bridge Repair Bundles Consultant is working diligently on environmental processes and design for that project. Bickleton Overlay Box Springs, I am working with Washset with that funding paperwork in place. And they have most of that project actually in review currently. White plastic edge lines, curb warning signs, and the road safety plan update are all in the design phase. We're looking to get out for a consultant for that road safety plan update, and we'll get started on that as well.
Okay, our maintenance guys are on the east end. They're paving East Road, Matson Road. On the west side, we're installing culverts, brushing, and helping the east side pave. Upcoming facilities, we got to grade around the building, put chips down, and get the final for our elect finish putting in the electrical the contractor does. And that project will be wrapping up in time for the fair. Superior Court, pretty much the same. Court opens on the fifth. We're finishing up woodworking. Sounds, the lacquer went okay. We didn't receive any complaints. So that went okay. The spraying of the lacquer in the courtroom. On event side, Rodeo Bible Camp went well, was very packed. Back to School Bash is this Saturday on the courthouse lawn, and the State Patrol National Night Out is Tuesday, August 6th. Fuel Island is the same. Everything else is the same. Beer Garden Bleachers, they're in the process of putting the riff on. Other filed up, other follow-up issues I think we have to discuss is the fire, a little bit from our perspective. We did end up contracting with DNR, actually Washington State Patrol, to buy fuel from our Bickleton service, our Bickleton shop area, so that was done. And yes, we did receive a lot of damage. We lost over two thousand feet of guardrail and a bunch of signs. And we did receive some damage on the road. Prelimarily, we're looking at probably two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of damage. So we will do everything we can to try to get outside.
Two hundred and fifty thousand. Someone in the back didn't hear you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
When a guardrail burns, do you just have to replace the wood posts?
When a guardrail burns, you just have to replace the wood post? Or does the fire change the dynamic of the metal enough to potentially weaken it? So you have to actually change the guardrail itself?
We're assuming most of the guardrail had to be changed. Not all of it, but it will take the tensile strength out of a lot of it.
That was my question.
Odd enough, and so.
I just couldn't think of the word tinsel strength.
I have to say, I was shocked. I saw the guardrails when I went out. And but when I came back, I thought, there's no posts.
Oh, they burned to the.
Yeah, well, they're full of creosol, so yeah, they they're.
Burnt right up.
They're just oil candles.
They just burned right up. You know, even if we had metal posts, we would still burn the blocks. So the guardrail would still, because they, you know, the the metal posts don't have metal blocks.
Well, and I would imagine if you try to be cheap about that, and then a car goes through the guardrail, and then they can show that it burnt in a fire and you didn't replace it. Now you're one percent responsible, and you pay the, well, we'll talk about that when we talk about insurance later, but yeah.
Yes, no, we will not do that, so.
I, that's why I was double checking. I wanted to see if you were a risk liability, and you're.
We're very, you know how we are, very maybe too far. We're not going to.
My job is to double check.
And I think that's all we have, yes?
I have two things.
Go ahead.
I received two different thank yous to Public Works, which I should have told you already, but I didn't, about the addition of the white fog line on parts of Centerville Highway going out there into the curves. They say they will much appreciate that when we get to fog season, and they can't see that yellow line going down the middle of the road. So I wanted to point out, thank you for fog lines. And then, do we have any kind of information? Not asking for an answer today, just reminding you about the wildlife crossing slash Turkey Crossing slash whatever in High Prairie by the Fire Department. That you were going to figure out if there was something we could do.
Yeah, we were gonna, we just haven't had.
I'm just reminding.
Opportunity to dig dive into that. We're still kind of tying up budget. And then, you know, Seth spent all his Friday working on stuff for the fire and stuff.
You haven't developed your hazing program for Turkey?
No, we have not.
I figured, I was just reminding, so it didn't fall off the list. I'll remind you again in, you know, another.
Okay, it's probably good you reminded us, because to be honest with you.
I know, it's low priority, and that's what I told them. So I just wanted to, you know, keep it on the.
Probably good. We appreciate that. Yes, we did forget about the turkeys.
And I threw you a bone on the fog line, so I had to throw you a brick on the turkeys.
Okay.
We lose mics? No, it's back again.
No.
That's all I have.
Me too.
Okay, thank you.
Well done, Public Works.
Okay.
You want to quickly work through pay estimates and step down, and we'll whack these out, and then we'll do natural resources. Madam Chair, I moved that we pay pass number two to the Bickleton Area Paving Project CRP 372, in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
I.
I?
Madam Chair, I move that we pay pass number two, Sundale Old Highway Eight, CRP 359, in the amount of one million, fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents.
And I'll step down in second. All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I?
Madam Chair, I move that we pay a pass number five for the Fairground Sail Barn Project in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, fifty-nine cents.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I, thank you. Pay estimates. So now we have an update from Department of Natural Resources in regard to the Trout Lake Natural Area Preserve. Good morning. Thank you for being patient with us today.
I expected them to show up with a presentation and.
Not the way our technology has gone today, please. Thank you.
They were probably sitting there through the whole technology speech going, oh. No, I appreciate it. I'm giving you a hard time.
Yeah, no worries. Go ahead. Yeah.
For the record, Larry Leach, Southeast Region Manager, Department of Natural Resources.
Kena Wagner, Southeast Region Natural Areas Manager.
And for the record, I'm Kayla Swanson with the Conservation Fund. We're the owner and manager of the property. We'll be discussing.
So I'm really just kicking this over to Kena, and I'm here to support Kena's or Natural Resources manager, like she said. And this is a potential transaction that would help fill in some of our Trout Lake Natural Area Preserve expansion boundary.
So just a kind of quick background on the Trout Lake Natural Area Preserve. It was established in nineteen ninety-three. It's currently about two thousand acres. It's kind of in the northwest corner of the county, north of Trout Lake. Majority of the the site includes a high-quality wetland complex that supports the Oregon Spotted Frog, which is a federally listed species, sandhill cranes, which is a state endangered species, and several rare plants. There's also forested land surrounding the wetland that provides habitat for several wildlife and plant species as well. So what we're wanting to do is to, there's, when the boundary was established, it was it was based on kind of roads and the geological features of the site, ecological features of the site. And there's two parcels that that go beyond our existing boundary. In the map, there's the west, the west side parcel, it's a forty-acre parcel, that is important for the breeding area for the Oregon Spotted Frog. So and it also connects Trout Creek, so Forest Service land to the north, and then the NAP to the south. So it's a good connectivity, protecting that that creek, and then the breeding areas for the for the Oregon Spotted Frog. And there's about seventeen acres outside of that existing boundary. And then on the the parcel on the east side, also extends beyond the the boundary, the current boundary. And so, and that's important area for, it's kind of a rocky outcrop area for several breeding areas for snakes, including the sharp-toed snake and garter snakes. So what we're wanting to do is, the Conservation Fund has purchased these properties, and it wanted to buy them from them to include that whole parcel that's in there. So it would, again, provide that connectivity along Trout Creek and to the and on the east side as well. And then it's surrounding both of those parcels. It's DNR trust land as well, so.
Can I share just a little of the history? Sorry to interrupt, Kena. I'll just share that the Conservation Fund helped to purchase the hundred thousand acres of SDS lands. When they were sold in twenty twenty-one, we worked with Green Diamond Company to purchase those lands. And the Conservation Fund took on properties that would be beneficial for wildlife habitat, for fuels risk reduction and fire risk reduction in the area. We've been working with partners like Columbia Land Trust and Mountain House Resource Stewards to permanently protect those properties. We are not long-term landowners. We own the property for, you know, five to ten years while we work with local organizations to take them on. So our vision is typically to keep lands in a mix of working and ecological benefit. These two properties, we we've included in our ownership specifically because of their benefits to the wildlife at DNR's request and at the community's request. So I do just want to highlight that this is the only piece of property that we're expecting to convey to DNR. We are really hopeful that the the county will be supportive. I'm sorry, Commissioner Anderson's not here today. We've spoken with him in the past, and I think I hope he would also speak to the history of this project.
Are these both spotted frog? I can't imagine they're open grassland too bad, but.
Now, the one, yeah, the one on the west is it's a wetland area. Yeah, yeah. And then the the east parcel is.
And then I'm assuming if you do acquire these, you're going to redraw your area boundary?
Correct. Yeah, our boundary would include the whole parcel. And kind of the reason, yeah, it's just that the private parcel extends beyond the boundary. So we just want to include all of it. Yep. So that that would be the only adjustment that we're.
And creating that corridor, you know, it just fills in those those areas that are currently public land, so I think.
So in my little map, I was trying to coordinate with our maps online, but short of, I'll just ask. It denotes Clickedat County. I believe that's why it says Clickedat. That red line, is that the White Salmon River? Or is that Trout?
That's the road, actually. It's Highway one forty-one, or, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but yeah, Trout Creek does feed into the White Salmon.
Yeah. And a lot of this, is it associated with the swamp just outside of Trout Lake? In the green, that green section? That's what I'm assuming, because it's like road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the green, so the, yeah, on the map, you, are you referring to the map? The green is what's currently owned by DNR as the natural preserve. Yeah. And then the black, black line around here is our approved boundary.
Okay.
So we can purchase property within, from willing sellers within that a boundary. And so what we're wanting to do is update that boundary to include these two parcels.
Okay, for a total of a hundred and sixty acres-ish. That's the combined acreage of both those pieces.
Is a new purchase. Okay.
Yeah. And we, just to know, we do have, because there's other parcels that we're purchasing from them within the boundary. We do have current grant funding from RCO to.
And then, last question I have, and stupid question, but wanted it on the record. These are both going to be public, open to the public, correct?
Yeah, there is. So natural.
Good luck getting there, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good luck finding a road to take you there, but if you want to hike.
And there is some, we do actually at this site have public access. We have a boat launch and interpreted trail that people can walk. There's also, they walk along the North Road, too. And then they're very, they're open for research and education opportunities as well.
Yeah, I'm, I don't have any more questions. I'm in favor.
Yeah, I'm good.
So are you, what are you needing from us? Are you going to give us a letter of recommendation draft or something that you want us to sign so you can submit, or whatever you need?
We're really just wanting to keep you. In the loop-armed of what we're we're plotting and get any feedback from you today. So the feedback we received is very much appreciated, so we can keep down the path that we were headed down.
Works for me.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thanks, Seth.
Yeah.
Do you know a Lucas King?
Yes.
Okay, would you like him to speak?
Oh, yeah, he's part of, yeah.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. King. There you are.
Can can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I just wanted a couple comments and and then follow up with one clarifying statement. But I'm reaching out. I'm the Vice President of the Trout Lake Community Council, as well as a volunteer of the, for the Trout Lake Fire Department and a lifelong resident of Trout Lake. But I am speaking today just as a neighbor of the NAP and a resident of Trout Lake, not on the behalf of the organizations. But the the boundary line acquisition doesn't, hasn't, or was just brought to the community council less than twenty-four hours ago. So that's a note that I wanted to make that there really hasn't been community buy-in for this process of the acquisition boundary expansion. Additionally, in a community council meeting on on March 5th, twenty twenty-four, a DNR Natural Areas employee said the DNR Natural Areas Program will not engage in conducting fuel breaks or fire risk reduction management activities, even in priority areas identified in the two thousand eighteen Clickedat County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So that is, that is a major concern as a neighbor to the NAP, that the DNR won't be, won't be reducing wildfire risk as they're purchasing timberlands. This employee also said that they won't be doing active forestry until they hire a forester, which makes a lot of sense. Until he followed that up with, they don't have funding to hire a forester and may not have funding to hire a forester in the foreseeable future. What else? So I, so a couple, the the main concerns that they have are the catastrophic risk to wildfire in Trout Lake. We're ranked in the hundredth percentile according to wildfirerisk.org. We have a lot of neighbors to the NAP if if management actions are not going to be taken. I have concerns about continuing to deteriorate the Clickedat County tax base. And I have concerns if this property is conveyed to the DNR, that I I don't know if they'll pay taxes or not, so clarification on that would be awesome. And and yeah, just the short notice request for support from the community less than twenty-four hours ago. It seems like there wasn't adequate community input gathering. Yeah, so those are my main concerns, and and I speak on behalf of a neighbor and not from the council perspective or the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. King. And if you don't mind, before you respond, I'd like to let Pat Arnold speak. She has her hand raised. Good morning, Pat.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I completely support what Lucas said about wishing that the council had had time to formulate a response, because I saw an email yesterday and forwarded it to everybody, asking for consensus to speak in support of this. And Lucas responded with the concerns that he just raised, and we decided via email that we couldn't provide a letter of support, because we need further discussion. I think that some of the, so again, I'm speaking as an individual, as Lucas did. I fully support this. I have not been able to determine from, because I haven't been able to see the maps correctly, how many acres additional would be added to the NAP by this. I think some of the parcels are already in it, and and this part of the parcel isn't, or I'm not really sure how many acres would be added. I think in this case, the location of them is far enough away from any of the public use areas that it's really not a concern. People in Trout Lake, many people really don't understand what the purpose of the NAP is, which is, it's a natural area preserve, and so there's a lot of discussion about things like swimming holes that used to be publicly available. But it's a complicated discussion, and I think that the council will benefit from having this discussion. And I want to just reinforce what Lucas said, is that we wish that there'd been a chance for us to do that. It touches on a lot of concerns that are important for the council and fire prevention and stuff. It's one of them, although I think we would need input from the DNR about whether the natural area preserves, how they can participate in that kind of thing without, because they do have a special legislatively defined purpose, and they're not at liberty to just step outside that mission that's defined by the legislature. So it's a little bit of a complicated discussion, and I wish that we had time, we had had time to have it. Speaking as an individual, I absolutely support this. Thank you.
So I guess, you know, Lucas commented on a lot of stuff there. I didn't quite catch all of it on. But I will say, I think our actions speak louder than words. We actively manage our our trust lands for forest health benefit. We've recently conducted a a bunch of fuels reduction, forest health type work at our Clickedat Canyon and RCA. And even though we don't have a forester employed in our natural areas program, the foresters from our our trust lands program actively work with our natural areas folks to to do forest health work that's congruent with the objectives of our natural areas. We're also engaging with Mountain House Resource Stewards to participate with the wildfire defense grant that they recently received to do some fuels treatments around Trout Lake along potential operational delineations, which are pre-identified fire breaks on the landscape that we can prep ahead of a wildfire, so we're more ready. And we don't need to, you know, search for resources in an emergency. We've already got the fuels treated. The natural area at Trout Lake in particular, the objective there is to promote the wetland. And having that wetland wet is a huge benefit to the community of Trout Lake for wildfire defense by creating a green space on that side of the community. So those are kind of our overarching strategic objectives here. And, you know, these additional properties really just encompass more more wetland on that western piece. And on the the eastern, northeastern piece there, from what I understand, that's mostly a rocky area, which doesn't require a lot of fuels treatments. And did you have more?
Oh, I just wanted to respond to the questions around timing. Pat and Lucas and Trout Lake Community Council, all of you would love to apologize for short notice. I don't think we were looking for a letter of support or a motion of support today, since this is just informational for the Clickedat County Commissioners. But we do really want the Trout Lake community to be supportive of this project, of course. And so would love to offer, I think myself and probably Kena, to come to one of your meetings in the near future, if that's of interest. And I do hope that this, I think this has been something that's been identified by the community in the past. So maybe we can work through that offline, but.
Yeah, and I can speak to that, too, that I would definitely love to be at one of your next community council meetings. The total acreage is a hundred and sixty acres. Some of that, most of that is within the the current boundary. So and it includes more along that that road. And it's, you know, as far as the management of the site, that is something that we're always looking at. We have done some forest treatments at that site as well. But it's just, yeah, it's something that we're working through and and getting. It's always part of of how we manage that site and something we're looking at. I will also say that we are also really trying to engage the community at this site. Pat mentioned the use and people in the community not knowing, you know, the preserve and what makes it that different. And we are actively really trying to engage and get and get input from the community and work through kind of the use and the management plan for this site. So I think a lot of that will hopefully, we will be engaging the community council and other community members as whoever's willing to to work with us on on how we can best manage that site for for the community and for the resources that are there.
Thank you. Mr. Christopher, do you have any further questions? I had a, just a couple of things. Just so the public understands, too, this is an informational meeting for us. This is a willing seller and private landowner situation, and it's, thank you for advising us and letting us know where you're going in the future, but we really don't have influence on private landowner transactions. We like to be involved and know, just like the community councils, which is great. And as maybe I think you transition from your holdings to DNR, it'd be important to schedule a meeting with them and let them know just what you were saying to hear, but on a broader picture. Trust lands, do you have different categories within your trust land that this is going to be in? This is under conservation schools. What is this land going to be?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for reminding me. I needed to touch on that topic, too. So as these lands transfer to the natural area preserve, the county would be compensated through payment in lieu of taxes or pilt. And it would not actually transfer as trust lands. We've got. And uh, it would not actually transfer as trust lands. Um, we, we've got the, the full gamut of D N R ownership models in Quick Tech County.
Yeah.
Um, so.
This a private seller?
Yes.
So it wouldn't qualify for REIT then? We would be paying Pilt instead of REIT or real estate excess tax?
It's moving from private into.
I understand, but since private is involved, I'm surprised it isn't paying REIT. That, I don't know, budget question.
Yeah, that, that's more of a transactional question that I'm not prepared.
Level number twenty six, sorry.
Uh, but there would be a, a Pilt payment um made by the legislature to the county. Um, as far as taxes on the transaction itself.
I believe we pay the taxes.
I thought you paid the REIT. So I was curious when you said Pilt, I'm like, hmm, am I missing out on my? You gotta pay in this hand and this hand, sir.
We'll get you all the money that's coming, dude.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted some clarification for my budget.
And that's all I had, but thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Are we way ahead? Yeah, we're a half hour ahead. Is there anything we can do and give our next one that time till?
Technically, yeah, my insurance update's a good fifteen minutes or so.
Go ahead. That'd be great.
Yeah. Um, so we had an insurance conference, the summer conference, which is also workshops and educational, which I find to be very. Educational, no matter how much I grumble about it. It is um. There was only about twenty minutes that kind of put everybody asleep, but other than that, it was good. Uh, notes to bring back. Was our insurance pool currently has uh ten jail death legal claims on the books. Four of those are overdose, two of them were withdrawn for suicide. Um, they just settled a jail death claim with the same law office representing the claimant for our county. Uh, and they settled it for nine hundred and fifty thousand. Um, this same law office has five of the current ten claims in the risk pool. Um. We were asked to rate our county on a scale of one to ten on how serious. Does our county take risk management um for potential litigation? Uh, I had to give it an honest review and that was a three. Uh, I think we've done little to reduce potential litigation. Uh, and we continue to do things that cause increased litigation. Uh, I would say we are better than we were three years ago. Um, for sure. Uh, but this board needs to go a, a step forward and create policies. Uh, in this county, if it wants to reduce risk litigation, that, that comes from the top through policy level. Um. We had workshops discussing. Uh, how we do that. Um, and some of these are not new. Uh, I've been bringing them for three years and I will continue. Uh, risk management uh was dealing with succession planning for employees. Uh, yearly evaluations, employee binders. Uh, making sure you have a backup plan if, if employee, you know, gets hit by a bus or whatnot, that I would still like to institute. Uh, county strategic planning, uh, cross-training practices. Um, how these must be the focus from the legislative authority and enforced through policy creation. Uh, once again, you've heard that before. Um, here's a new one. Uh, some of the counties do departmental ratings. So they set up a committee. Uh, and or they just had one. Office look at it. That evaluates claim costs by departments or offices. And then makes a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners about budgetary cuts to that department that are having claims issues. Um. I guess I'd say so in shirts. I don't bore you with all my. Legal mumbo jumbo. We, we know that we have claims in certain areas where we don't in other areas. Right now, we just divide the insurance premium. Based on the number of employees in your department. But that doesn't reward you for being a good steward of risk management. Or punish someone for being a bad steward of risk management. What they do is if there is a claim or deductible. And that deductible is granted in most counties, a hundred thousand or more. Um, this group makes a recommendation to the commissioners to transfer some of that expense. Into that department or office. Um, they may not pay the whole hundred, but here you're paying twenty five and it's coming out of your current budget. Um, so that makes them take risk management a little more serious. I thought that was a very intriguing idea. Uh, with that, just for clarification, our liability that I thought was a hundred thousand dollars for things like the jail is only twenty five. So I was wrong. I'll be the first to admit I was wrong. Uh, it's twenty five, everybody, we'll get to that later. Um, anyway, that's an idea for discussion later. Uh, we discussed how the risk pool supports member counties through education and training. And what they can do better and, and they do a tremendous job if you. Compared to our last pool that didn't have a whole lot of education. But. I do believe the board and the directors and the other officials need to take risk management a little more seriously in this county. And so I recommended to them to come out and put on a workshop. Uh, where we can invite all of our directors, other electeds, if they want to show up, they can show up. They can hear everything that I'm hearing. Uh, and, and hopefully that spurs them to. Take things a little more seriously and, and then would help the board. Uh, set policy going forward on some of these things I've been chining about for three years. Um. I, we're there, which again, which I just said, talked about for three years. Good time to once again bring up the, the need for training. Uh, in this county to set policies on First Amendment audits, which we got our first one last year. I've been. Training for that for a while. Uh, and then also open public meeting laws, because it's came to my. I learned that there, we still have people in this county that are open public records act. I learned that we have people in this county that. Still don't understand. Uh, the legalities. Of what is an open public records request? Uh, and if we don't fix these things, we'll fix it after we pay the fifty thousand dollar losses. Uh, that we won't even go to court on. We'll just settle for fifty. Um. We discussed protecting employees from verbal harassment and bullying. From civilians as well as elected officials. And once again, I've talked about that one. Uh, this is again done through policymaking of the legislative authority. Um. I believe that this is the greatest risk this county has. Uh, in our employment litigation. Um, and I hope we can dive into that one again uh someday. Um. Oh, I talked to our legal counsel on the jail death. Who was doing a presentation there in a workshop. Uh, the talk was very enlightening, but not surprising. Uh, and reiterated my belief that the board needs to do more to create policies. Uh, on bullying and harassment. Um, I can show you some numbers. It might be interesting. Or not. Maybe I should have switched it first. I'm gonna switch it first. Yeah, that's what first. Okay. Uh, liability ability program. As you can see, every other county in our county in there. Uh, our deductibles twenty five thousand, you can see who pays what. Um, our insurance premium for liability uh is getting a twenty percent increase. Uh, which is essentially an increase of two hundred and five thousand ninety seven dollars.
Is that a standard increase or is that based off of?
Um, if you look at the middle, I, you probably can't see it. I should.
No, I can see it. I'm good.
I actually printed. Some. Here you go. Here's three print copies. I wasn't planning on handing them out, but.
Was it?
They get your eyeballs closer. If you look in the middle, it uh gives you um deductible factors.
Okay.
Uh, and modification factors and those are, I guess I would say. Um. Lack of a better word punishments for good behavior, bad behavior.
I see.
Um, and as you can see, we're really nowhere, no real movement, zero, one, one. Um. So with that, the liability rate they did ask for recommendations between twenty, thirty and forty percent increases. Uh, which would just raise the um. Reserves in the fund balance. Um, but only four counties were interested in going above twenty percent because the actual rate increases right around eighteen. Uh, we went with twenty, so it would be a, a round number and had like a hundred grand in reserves. Um. So the insurance pool is sound. Anyway.
Are the modification factors based off of events or off your policies?
Um, everything and how many, how many employees you have, how many you've.
Okay.
Had and didn't have. Uh, claims of, of. Risk. Um, it's their, it's their tool of assessment.
Okay.
Uh, all in all, let's just say there's an increase of two hundred and five thousand ninety seven dollars.
Okay.
In the liability program. Next, we run the property and I'm not going to go through the entire.
Sure.
Three hundred pages, uh, property deductible five hundred thou, or sorry, five thousand dollars. Um. It's actually a ten percent rate reduction or savings of thirty two thousand this year. The one thing they are changing is they're allowing us. In the future to insure property for what we want to ensure it for, not what its replacement value is. It was mandated that you had to insure for what its replacement value is and why that smart strategy on a twenty million dollar building. If it burns down, you need the twenty million dollars of the twenty two to rebuild it. We have items in this county, a train in Wishram that the county owns. Uh, that if it burnt to the ground, we're never going to replace. We don't need rough placement value. Uh, we need cleanup value. Um, so I understand why some counties are pushing for that. And I do believe there are some occurrences where we might be able to see some savings from that. Uh, anyway, uh, property program uh saving thirty two thousand this year. Uh, moving on to cyber, which is incredibly small, which might surprise some people. Um. When you see some counties like Watkins went up seven percent on cyber. So obviously they had a glitch in the matrix. Uh, over there. Uh, overall, the cost is cheap, but there is an increase of uh ninety eight dollars on that one. So by my math, which I'm not the finance person, I gave her the paperwork. Uh, so she can do math uh better than I do. I get a apples to apples comparison of a hundred and seventy two thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollar increase. Um. But with that, I would remind us that we're still well below. Uh, what we were with the other insurance company.
Okay.
Um, even today, because that was one point four million dollar policy two years back. And we're still below that number and they've had twenty percent increases here over years as well. Um, the last thing that I will. Scroll to. Cause I don't have my pins up, so you have to bear with me until I get to page one seventy three. Um, they use Chandler asset management for their economic update, which is probably my favorite part of the conference. Um. And so I'll let you, I'll throw that up there. Oops. Case anybody cares. Uh, in short, they're protecting um. One interest rate cut by the Fed this year, four interest rate cuts next year. Um, but all in all, no recession for next year. Uh, but there will be some loss of interest revenues. Uh, based on what. Their projection of those cuts are so. Uh, but other than that, appointment means everything means remains pretty decent. Um, yeah, and that's kind of the end of that two day conference.
Good job. Lot of information.
Dana.
Oh, that was good.
No, I do.
It was a good recount.
I think. I think they even see the value of coming into counties and doing workshops to educate. Um, other electeds, department heads, whatnot, because I think it also, in like I explained to them, it educates the public. We, we start losing huge lawsuits because the public isn't, doesn't understand one percent liability. Uh, they don't understand if you're, if a jury finds you one percent responsible for somebody that got ran over in a crosswalk, you get to pay the whole claim. Um, and a, a lawyer can't tell them that while they're on the jury. Um, so if. If the risk pool can come in and do a. Educational workshop for us, it also gets out in the public who's listening to that educational workshop. So that maybe when they're sitting in juries, they don't award one percent to people who aren't at fault. Um, so that they have to pay million dollar settlements. And the other good thing is, is the um. Much lower cost of the jail death settlement. Uh, we all know Spokane paid twenty million for theirs. Um, that one went to court. Um, but um, it. Oh, and the other conversation was. And this is an important one for this legislative authority. Who decides? Whether it's a good idea to settle a claim out of court? Who decides? Technically, it's the Board of Commissioners who decide. It's the legislative authority whether we accept a settlement. The great analysis I received there from another county, which I totally agree with. Is we currently have a deductible of twenty five thousand dollars. So as far as I'm concerned, if it's anything under twenty five thousand dollars, I get to decide whether we're accepting that. Settlement offer or not accepting that settlement offer. If it's anything over twenty five thousand, it's not my money. It's the insurance companies. So I would certainly hope this board would. Listen to their opinion. Because if you don't settle. When they say you should settle. Um, that could cause higher premiums to them. They're the experts. And if they're willing to assume that cost. And settle for that dollar amount, we would be very bad. For this county to say, no, don't settle. Let's go to court. You also run a risk of the insurance company saying, well, we tried to settle and you didn't. So now you get to cover the whole dividend. So fair warning as we go through some of these um on our books. Uh, to heed the advice of the insurance company.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. And it was kind of, it wasn't.
Thank you. Okay. Ready to?
And finance, if you have any questions, call her at me offline. Um. I gave you the paperwork. You know what I know. Oh, the only thing I forgot to add, sorry. Uh, I reminded you guys last year and I forgot to do it. It's on my notes, but I forgot to read it. Uh, they're going to a different calendar year billing system. So it used to be October to October. And now we're going January, one in December. So next year, instead of twelve months for the payments in twenty twenty five, you'll actually have fifteen. We always had fifteen. We just did twelve on the budget and three in a supplemental.
Okay.
Now it, it probably will all, I'll leave that to her for later. It will probably be all one number in the budget. In the hundred and seventy five thousand number I gave you was an apples to air apples comparison of October to October. That the graphs I gave you had the, the other three months. Um, in there as well, but.
Appreciate it.
Almost missed that one. So I have.
Great. Thank you.
I'm not cheering anymore.
And so I think, Shannon, are you ready? We're a little early. Thank you for coming in.
So typically, um. On typically in the past, this portion of the supplemental budget, which is. Really just to set a public hearing um would happen just on the consent agenda. But with our budgets getting tighter and having to do a little bit more long range planning and um thought going forward. I thought it best to just bring it in as a discussion. And if the board had any questions on anything, um, it could be asked. Of me now, I can get those answers before we end up in a hearing um and, and doing that in a public hearing. It just becomes messy. Um, any, if any changes um were wanting to be made, I can have the ability to do that ahead of time. Make those adjustments before we go into a public hearing.
I appreciate that.
Have you had a chance to review the supplemental requests yet?
Yes, I, I did, but uh, and I.
Would you like a copy?
Yes.
If you have it, that'd be great. I'm trying to load it now.
Thank you.
I usually glance at it when you submit it and then I pick through it with a fine tooth comb before we vote on it. But I agree with your, uh, your way of going about it here. So I will change the way I do business.
Well, we're not. You know, there's no vote needed for today, other than just to set the hearing, um, which I believe is for August thirteenth. Um. And. Yeah. A little timeout on my day ahead saves a lot of time. Work wise later. So it's a total um sum of nine hundred eighty. So it's a total um, sum of nine hundred eighty eight thousand one hundred eighty four dollars. Um, some of those, of course, are. Technical accounting adjustments, having to move money from one fund to another, so it ends up double counting. Um, their total of eleven's budget requests. Uh, three are deemed budget neutral, indicating they have sufficient revenue from sources such as grants or saved fund balances. Um, amounting to seventeen thousand dollars. Four requests are technical accounting adjustments. While the remaining four necessitate intervention.
What would classify a layman's term for technical accounting adjustment?
I'm gonna use an example in here of the auditor's non-departmental. Um, the, the funding for the um. ERP transition came from the American Rescue Plan Dollar Act. Which is sitting in one twenty five, Fund One Twenty Five, because it's been designated by the board to be utilized for this. So the technical adjustment would be the added expense. To get it out of one twenty five and that transfer line to put it into the auditor non-departmental budget.
Perfect.
So the total. Budget intervention uh, requests comes to a hundred and forty seven thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. You will see on one of the requests. In the sheriff's um, supplemental request. That I had lined out some items on there, um, because those ended up being really. N- not a supplemental need, more of a, an accounting correction. So we were able to do that correction through AP.
Only thing you're missing is page numbers.
Sorry, it's built in uh, three different programs and thrown together, so. And I had to do this one very last minute with budget and orderlies going on and, and now FEMA.
Can you uh, give a brief overview of each of these supplemental requests?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Let me see. Okay, so. Um, the auditor's non-departmental um, is professional services related to the um. Financial system upgrade. And you. Utilizing, there is an error, um, a formula error on a page in there that I caught after it was already printed, so I have a feeling that. Might be the page that you're looking at.
No, I don't know, maybe, maybe not.
Then, so we're using designated fund balance from the American Rescue Plan Dollars to cover that. Um, Human Resources has a ten thousand dollar professional services request for the jail um, commander.
Roffman.
Yep. West District Court, due to having to have an interpreter in. On site once a month, they anticipate their um, professional interpreting services to, to be increased. Um, a lot of times we do that kind of closer to the end of the year, but she already saw it coming ahead of time, so we just, I. Thought it best that we get it done.
I kinda like, yeah, the things we know can't be adjusted, I'd prefer to do them now, so I know where I'm at later.
And her, her budget and Judge Baker's budget, they're, they're just so tight. That, you know, thirteen hundred dollars does make or break that budget.
Yeah, they have been very good, so, yeah.
Um, the sheriff's. Has a retirement, uh, unplanned retirement in the patrol. Department, um, so there's that, there, the patrol's um, left medical, which is retired left. Officers. Has a substantial increase. Um, that we are so stat- statutorily required to pay on. Um, uh, jail inmate medical services.
The left medical, um. Sorry, another board I sit on. You might know the answer to this. Did we not approve that person's long-term care last year before the budget, or was it after the budget was already done? So that isn't what this is. Interesting. Oh, there's, there's.
No, I.
I'll answer it maybe tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. I think it's the same person.
Cause I, I can imagine it's the same person, but I, I wanna know more details on that and why it wasn't. Technically, if it's what I thought it was, it should have already been rolled into the budget last year, knowing it's coming.
Oh.
Um, and so that was my only thing is when that, when did that happen? Um, cause it may have happened after we'd already done budget since we did budget so early last year.
Right.
But that's my only issue, but not like I can change the person or the care they need, so.
And then um. Inmate meals has an increase there. Um, the sheriff's also requesting to use um. Posse scout donations for um, whatever posse scout miscellaneous needs that they have. Um. They are anticipating receiving an additional dollar amount above budget from their um, recreation boating safety grant. So that is being budgeted here. And so there is an increase in the investigations uh, for. Travel and repairs and maintenance, and they're requesting to use fund balance that they already have. Um. Additionally, there is the patrol vehicles that were purchased late in the year last year. Received late in the year last year, therefore. They were not able to get them built. To, you know, those add-ons before the year end was over and invoiced, so there's a rollover there of eighteen thousand dollars that. To add to the um, VRNR fund to get those add-ons. Put on and paid for. And as a reminder. Too that uh, VRNR. Will only pay for certain specific types of add-ons for vehicles in situations where. Patrol vehicles, they purchase as stock. Vehicle instead of an actual patrol vehicle, they have to make some changes to, with um. The exhaust and light bars and. Radio systems and all of that. Those things are able to be purchased with. Through VRNR, and we add those dollars what we anticipate within the rental rates to the, to do that. Um, items such as wear and tear items are not allowable out of VRNR. So just as a reminder, cause that came up as a question this, this round.
Yep, and that, that question surprised me too. Um, not the answer, but the question that they didn't know the answer to the question. Um, what were they trying to? Bill under VRNR, do you know the specific?
I, you know, just. Off the top of my head, a couple of things.
I remember now.
Yeah, tired pain.
Tire chains.
Ratchet straps.
Yeah, yeah. I'll give you light bars and brush guards and winches and lights and. Stickers for your corridor if you need them, but not tire chains and oil filters and wiper blades.
Well, and I think this, the decals out of the other offices and departments are paid for out of. The office and department, but I.
Office supplies versus VRNR.
Hmm.
Interesting.
I believe the case, yeah. Um, so with that being said, any questions or concerns related to this supplemental?
Concerns.
Um, I am utilizing. The remaining. Almost all of it, there's a, you know, about fifteen thousand dollars left of the local tribal inconsistency fund. Uh, to cover this supplemental.
Is there any way, I mean. I already know the answer to this, but I have to ask just in case I don't. Is there any way we can? I don't know, get an answer on, on, on who might be retiring next year before we plan our budget? I mean, we really can't ask them.
No.
And we really don't know, and we really don't wanna put aside a savings account just in case there is one, so technically. What you're saying is the answer is every time there's a retirement, there's gonna be a supplemental to cover that person.
Unless we modify how we budget and this county has not budgeted um, those. Unfunded liabilities.
Right, and that's kinda where I'm kinda going, I don't know that.
Budget them, but.
I also don't wanna set aside, you know, a hundred grand over there that may not get used, and I need that hundred grand to do something else, cause I don't have extra select fund money.
Yes.
So I don't really wanna do it that way, but.
Thank you.
My brain, I think that's.
Moment in time I'd prefer not.
I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm with you, but that's the only way I can see doing it other than surprise supplementals for things like that, so.
It'd be quite a big change on our budget process.
But I worry about the surprises with the dysfunction. If we haven't. Sometimes you have to plan for a disaster.
Well, that's, that's the hard part, but we used to have. I guess I would say we had the same idea of that plan in every department. Here's your little bonus funds, just in case. The problem is we'd go through every year and then you add up all those bonus funds and they're two million dollars. That never got used, year over year over year. We don't have the option to do that anymore unless you wanna lay off twenty employees to create the two million. Um, to make those bonus funds that probably won't get used. So hence the reason we kind of drained all those little bonus funds, which is why Jake was saying. I can't believe we have a ten thousand dollar emergency fund. That hasn't been sucked dry yet. Um, because it's either that or you start making. Employment decisions and.
Yeah, um. And, and with that being said too. Uh, we, with those changes that were made, um, since you have been a commissioner with the budget, now we budget. Um, we started budgeting. An allocation amount in the non-departmental for the cost of living adjustments for those non-union employees, so there, there's a buffer there. Um, and I, I don't have the percentage off the top of my head from last year, but. We only use a small fraction of that to cover.
We plan the whole four hundred grand, but we make them eat it out of their budget if at all possible, and then we only pay a hundred and fifty grand.
Because usually there's a vacancy rate factor that we also don't budget for, and so a lot of departments are able to make up for that. With a vacancy.
But not always can they make up for retirement, and that was.
And that, and, no, absolutely, and, and my point to that would be that we do have that buffer that I believe would cover a retirement or two.
Good point.
To be able to handle that.
Yeah, I, I guess for most of this, I, I don't have much of an issue, it's, it's cost of doing business. I would say in some of this. A third. Of this sheriff, I do think we needed to be a little uh. Watch it a little closer, make sure the numbers they give us are accurate. Um, I mean, we've had that history where they. They cut their own budget and we have to put the money back in. Um, and, and, and it happens quite a bit. Um, and if we do a little better job. Uh, watching those things, then we may not have these. Yeah, interesting, okay.
With a report to the commissioner. With a report to the commissioner. So we know.
Oh, it's, no, it was like, um. Two things I can think of off the top of my head in the last two years. They reduced their own inmate medical. And both me and Jake are like, how are you paying less than you paid last year? And then, well, we have less inmates now. The inmate count is down because of the Blake decision and I was like, oh, okay, makes sense. Well, come to find out, it was cut, they cut it too much. Other one was fuel, they, they reduced their fuel, they spent whatever eighty thousand last year. And this year they only wanted seventy, and Jake's like, well, gas prices go up, don't you need more money? And so I think we bumped it from eighty to ninety instead of from eighty to seventy, which was their request, but. We're not catching it all is my point. So maybe we need to go through there and catch it all. And then if they need to make adjustments somewhere up to make adjustments for this, then so be it, but uh, if we do a little better job. Catching. Then we might avoid some of the stuff.
I have a plan for that. And, um. And I'm, I've been building it for quite some time. Um, so. To hopefully get it automated where I'm only entering it once and to be able to try and.
Technology?
I'm sure. Unfortunately, there's only one of me. And there are a lot of pressing items, and so. My bandwidth is stretched, um, but yes. I do have a plan and we could talk about that later, if you'd like to see it.
I would. Yeah, cause it's, it's one of those. How do I tell you no? Cause you know, you gotta have investigation, you gotta have. Uh, you know, whatever, but we, we can, what we can do. Is do a little better planning with our budget to get the numbers more accurate. So that we can shift money during the budget process to make sure you're. At your dollar line over here at the end of the year.
At the process, you're meaning at the process where the departments and the offices submit their requests and we go through our workshop.
At the budget building process, we can make sure that these high priority items like fuel. Are covered correctly. Because I'm not gonna tell you no on a supplemental for fuel. I might tell you no on a supplemental for batteries.
Yes.
So I need to make sure that these high priority line items in every budget. Are not the number that they gave, but the correct number, even if that needs to be higher. To make sure they don't have to come back for a supplemental for things that have to be done. They, they're gonna have to come back for a supplemental for things that don't necessary. If they don't function their budget accordingly.
Okay.
You see where I'm getting at there?
Yeah, um, I do, and.
We, we need to set the line for, look, look, since we're on sheriff's budget, we need to set the line for fuel. If they're too low, we add to it. Medical, too low, we add to it. Food, too low, we add to it. Now figure out where that's coming from somewhere else, but we, these key items that we know are gonna show up on a supplemental, we need to make sure are closer to accurate. Because I don't want them coming forward with, I need fuel, cause I can't say no. Uh, I need food, I can't say no. You need to come forward with, I need four hundred dollar boots, I can say no.
So, um. I hear you, uh, and then that would be beyond um, a directive that.
That's nothing you can do, that's something we.
Correct, and, and I mean, I'm happy to have that discussion and, and actually would. Need to have this discussion and maybe we could do it this afternoon too.
But whenever, it would be nice to get with all of the budgets, and I just was talking about sheriff, cause it was a page that was open, but with all of our budgets. Any of them that, that tend to have a history of supplementals in any way. We probably should have some kind of a hot sheet. For that department on which bars numbers are the absolute necessities that we look at a little closer and make sure. As we tell them, hey, by the way, you gotta do a three percent reduction, they don't just, we've seen it in the past, three percent reduction, okay, the insurance premium is zero. That's not accurate. Um, we need to have a hotline and not allow them to do the zero. Um.
I understand.
Anyway.
And, and. Um. And just so that the record knows too, like some of those items we wouldn't have never caught, because some of them were not being paid in the. In the year, so actuals were not accurate.
Well, and that's my other question, I. As I go through different budgets and different departments and offices. You get a bars number and all of these items. Get charged to that bars number. Is it possible? That somebody was buying pens, the flashlights, say a flashlight, pen should be pretty easy off, so. Uh, that they're billing flashlights to this bars number this year, but they're billing flashlights to a different bars number next year. Because I see. Numbers do this from budget year to budget year, and I'm like, how is, how does that happen?
So.
Unless they're billing it to different bars numbers on different years, and then it's hard to me to see a consistent year-over-year budget line. Of what you're using in that bars number. When, when we're, it's kind of a shell game going on.
For the most part, the auditor catches, I mean, it's odd, every AP batch is audited at least twice. Um, and the auditor is able to catch some of those, but remember, we're all human too. And so sometimes we forget where, I have to go look at my own codes at any time that I submit an AP batch, and. Sometimes we forget where those are supposed to go in their charted accounts, especially those of us who don't do accounting a lot. Um, I'm one of those people, I do financial analysis, not accounting, so, um. And then the other part, you know, I mean, you got human eyes doing the auditing, looking at tiny numbers, so. This, sure, some things can slip through and they do sometimes, but when when we find them, we make the correction.
Well, and I I think to simplify it in my terms. And Jen just said the words financial analysis. For us as commissioners, just to make it very, very clear. We're not nitpicking or micromanaging or looking, we're trying to find the best ways to make everybody healthy. And keep them there, and that's understanding for me, month to month, where are we at? How are they doing? Where do you see a deficit? What do I have to be looking out for? And if we wait six months down the line and here we wait. Till the supplementals come, that's where then we get in trouble and we have this surprise.
Well, and every office and department is responsible for managing their own budgets, so I would imagine that they would be reporting on them as well. On a monthly basis when they're in here doing their department updates.
And I I haven't had enough information, so going forward, I'll probably want more information monthly, so. So I know, even if I look for myself and then I can question when they come in.
I do think, and and we have started to do that. We need the quarterly. Red flag. Uh, you're in the green, you're in the red. That doesn't necessarily mean you're going to finish in the red, because you know, you might have a big expense every year in March.
Which absolutely, I do that every quarter.
But at least it's something we can be aware of. And help them be aware of, because in all reality, I don't know that everybody running their budget. Pays close enough attention to their budget. Um, and says, hey, we probably shouldn't buy flashlight batteries this month. So if we if we do better holding them, hey, by the way. Um, you're tracking it fifty-one percent, it's June. Um, make changes accordingly. But then they can either make the change, well, offices can either make the change or not make the change, and then come back for a supplemental, and then we either go to say. Yes or no. I just don't want to have to say yes or no to fuel. Life support, you know, anything like that. I want to say yes and no to batteries, boots. Wiper blades. Um, you know, well, not wiper blades, that's a safety item.
Yeah, well, and and just so that that you, the board knows, because you don't see my correspondence with everybody. Um, you know. On every supplemental sheet within the program on how you submit a supplemental, um, the same verbiage. And in all my emails reminding them, hey, supplemental is coming up if you need whatever. The verbiage that's part of this background page here, um, is a part of all of that, and if you look at. Um, some of their supplemental requests, oh, actually, it doesn't show on there, it shows on the screen there you enter it, that that they are to be. Financially, um, prudent and responsible, go back through their budgets, make sure that they have reevaluated. Their, um, spending plan for the year. Uh, before they request a supplemental. So that that verbiage is repeated over and over and over to them, um, throughout the process.
Yeah, I I mean, I don't mind if they rob Peter to pay Paul in their own budget. Uh, as long as that's a sustainable practice.
Heather's had her hand up for quite some time. Heather, Jovi.
We also produce monthly budget reports for the entire county and every department and office has access. To a report every month that shows what the budgeted amount is, what their actuals are, and gives a percentage of what's available.
And I believe the board has access to those shared files, too.
They do.
Thank you, Heather.
Okay, um, that's all I had on supplemental. I do have other questions, but.
If that's it with the supplemental, if you can make a motion and approve and sign the, um, resolution. Setting a public hearing. I would appreciate that. Um, and beyond the supplemental, I did have another email first thing this morning, back to back from FEMA, um. Is, uh, there's another opioid settlement, so I will. Put together the participation forms, see if we can get it on the agenda for.
Good, we should be getting close to being able to do something.
I I wish I could tell you off the top of my head right now, but I'm still waiting on numbers, allocation numbers from Kroger and everything there, so. Um, I will try to get it on next week's, but if I get capitalized this afternoon and we'll have to go on that one.
Any other questions, Mr. Van Clu.
Some budget related.
No, I was going to come back this afternoon and really talk about the budget itself.
We need to talk about the corners.
You're going to come back this afternoon and talk about budget, budget, process, procedure, twenty twenty-five. I'll save my question for then.
If that'll work, because you had a lot of questions, so I just thought that maybe that. Some questions pop up, and I have some things that popped up, so.
Some things about the corner to move forward, so this afternoon is at a better time.
Matter of me.
Works for me.
It's work here.
All right.
I get told to sit, I sit.
After Jeff King, I'm.
Yeah, veterans and then Jeff and then can be you. And then. Hey, we removed the insurance thing too, the other talk is. Uh, the First Amendment audit stuff. For this afternoon or now or whenever.
Jen can go before.
And that's fine, yeah.
Thank you, Jen. Okay. Where are we at? Are we at lunch yet? I think that's it.
We we are at lunch. Are you saying let's go to lunch?
Unless you have something else.
Except if I don't make a motion, you don't get to go lunch.
I'm not worried about it. I'm just going to go work. Whatever you want to do.
Uh, madam chair, I moved that we recess for lunch, be back at one o'clock.
I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I see you at one o'clock. Thank you.
Do six months.
Good afternoon, welcome. Excuse me. Good afternoon, welcome back to the afternoon session of the Commissioner's Regular Meeting for July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And we will begin with, uh.
Muting our phones? Yep, we'll do that.
Thank you. Director King for Emergency Management, you're up first.
See, everybody's reaching for their phone. We need the little sign back. Please mute your phones. You lost it. We get your copy now. Oh, Jeff takes like an hour and a half, so.
Yeah. And I'm so sorry, I I.
Say make it quick earlier, because we're in the middle of public comment and I figured I'd hear about it.
So Bill Caldwell from Veterans Advisory Board Update. Good afternoon.
Afternoon, good afternoon, Commissioners. Okay. Hear me?
Can hear you.
Yes, Bill Caldwell, I'm the current Chairman of the Veterans Advisory Board. Uh, there are. Usually five of us members. We have currently two vacancies. Uh, one in District One. And one, I understand District Two is just, um, might have a recruit now, we're. A candidate, I should say. So as soon as we get those other two positions filled. Uh, the Veterans Advisory Board will meet again for full five members, at which time we will. Go on and make our annual, uh, elections for officers and, uh. Basically train the new advisory board members, what our mission is and how we go about things.
Do you have a little boot camp for them?
Well, since they're all veterans, they probably are, they've been through that already. So they're fa, they should be fast learners.
There you go.
So I, um, we just had a meeting, the the three of us a few weeks back. And, uh, I only have a couple of things to summarize. Uh, number one. As you know, our primary ambition is to advise you. The Commissioners on any, on the status or any needs of. Indigent vets within the county. And indigent is defined in the RCW with a certain, uh. Benchmarks for income, et cetera. So during the past year. We've had no requests from indigent vets, uh, in the western part of the county. And as I recall, I don't think we've had any from the eastern part, however. We have had multiple requests from what we call needy vets. For example. There was a single, there is a single mother. In, uh, in the western, uh, part of the county. Her house burnt down and she has two children. Now she's not technically an indigent vet because she had a job, however, she was homeless. Uh, she got emergency shelter. But she had virtually no, uh, furniture, clothes or anything else. We couldn't come to the county to help, for help because of the RCW. Uh, so what happened was. Uh, the American Legion Post, we coordinated with other veterans resource in the state and managed to get her brand new furniture. Clothing, blankets, et cetera. Um, there are similar issues, I think, uh, in, uh, in the eastern part of the county. Uh, one more example of a needy vet versus indigent is. We've had, we had somebody in District One, an elderly couple in their eighties. They couldn't afford propane during the winter. Uh, their bill was the usual choice between propane and what else do you have to make? We. There there again, they did not qualify as indigent because of certain income levels. They needed help. We went on and paid their, uh, legion, that is, in the Oak's Lodge. In White Salmon, we paid their propane bill, got them up to date. So tho- those are examples of of where the county is as far as veterans go. This is a snapshot in time, just a year. We had a dis, we had a discussion in our last meeting amongst the advisory board members. Well, what does this mean? And it's a frustration because there are a lot of needy vets out there. We can't do them in accordance with the current guidelines, which you're well aware of. So our only conclusion is the only way this can change is. We, meaning collectively in the community, is going to have to go to the state legislatures and ask them to maybe take another look at what. Uh, some of those guidelines might be, indigent versus really some needy people. Because as you know, we tax the citizens of this county for veterans assistance. That conclude, and if you have any other questions on that, I'll I'll move on to another topic.
I don't necessarily have any questions. When you said they didn't have any money for propane, I was like, but there's like a million different. Groups and funds and whatnot, low energy assistance. And then I got to thinking about that cap that you're having a problem with. All those programs have that income cap. That that doesn't mean you don't need help, it just means we can't help you. Um, so it's, I think you're you're dead on right, the only two things to do or to try to change the state law. So we can catch those people in the middle that have fallen through the cracks. Uh, and or all the groups, uh, come up with some kind of fundraising event and and literally. Get some donations to help those people, because you're dead on right. We're restricted by state law on who we can give money to.
We we would ask perhaps that. The Commissioners, uh, from time to time, to the virtue of your. Your job and your activities, you come in contact with state legislatures, especially our local ones, and perhaps you could pass that sentiment on. Uh, when you next time you have an opportunity.
Yeah, I would like, um, and I I will remember if my seatmate is agreeable. Uh, Commissioner Anderson is now our delegation for the Washington State Association of Counties this year. Um, and to have, uh, I will give you my word that we will have this discussion when he gets back. Uh, in hopes of getting this issue brought to their attention. And maybe get on their list of priorities to push the legislature to work on, because, yeah. I agree with you.
It wouldn't be this year, because we've already set the legislative priorities, so it'll be next year.
Right, I was just saying, drop the hint up there, get the ball rolling, um, get them thinking about it for next year.
Uh, one final topic, uh, my, uh. My fellow advisory board members asked me to bring up, uh. Uh, this topic that there has been some problems with the county's. Veteran service officer in terms of some service issues with some, some folks have approached us on that. And the. The audit, um. The Office of the Auditor is, of course, well aware of all that in this. And is dealing with whatever internal issues they do, but I I felt, we felt duty bound at least pass out on it. We hope that the situation gets resolved.
That is the auditor's employee, so I don't know much about the situation, nor do I have any. Control over that situation, but I I hope that. Uh, I hope they're working through it, uh, with you guys anyway.
Well, I bring that up because, uh, the BSO also. Is responsible for indigence in turn, if they come to ask for services, so therefore we felt. That, uh, it was germane to, uh, bring that up.
We appreciate it, thank you.
And if there's no further questions, that concludes, uh, our report for now.
Well, thank, thank you for bringing that to our attention, too.
Yeah, I I just appreciate what you do. Not all counties in this state have. Uh, a veteran service advisory board. Not, I mean, honestly, very few have a veteran service officer. Uh, and I appreciate the people that came before me. Um, to make that a reality, and I think they did good work on that, and. I support the program in any way we can get it better, so if you guys run into any. Uh, issues that I do have control over. Um, bring them forward. Other than that, I will see what I can do on the other issues.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I have a couple of other boards that I'm on that I'll coordinate with them and see where veterans fit in, and if they're looking at services in other places, I'll let you know.
And Bill, do you guys have anyone that you've been talking to that'd be interested for the open, uh, position on the board?
Uh, Jake, we have, uh, we haven't talked to anybody specifically, but there may be. A few that, uh, we're aware of in the legion that if approached, uh, would probably have a favorable response.
If there's anyone you want me to talk to, let me know, Ben.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll be talking to you later then.
All right, thank you.
No, you stopped me thinking, so I'm.
Okay.
I'm in the middle of a thinking strategy going on over here. Um, I have no further questions, your honor, or your majesty, or whatever.
I've elevated.
Bob Doodle increase.
All right, thank you for commissioning your time, and I'm sure the new, uh. The new board of all full five members will will be looking forward to, uh, in tune to work with it. Thank you.
Mr. King. Thank you for coming back.
Uh, yes, hello again and good afternoon. So you wanted to know more about, um, the fires. And and specifically the Indian Hill generator. Issue, um. In the interest of time, I could go on and on about what I've been doing over the last. I don't know, nine days or whatever it's been.
Sleep probably hasn't been one of them, but.
Not much. I got a little more on Sunday than usual, but, um. Yeah, so I'll just ask or answer questions. And, uh, embellish what is needed from those questions, if I think it's necessary, unless you want me to give a full report. I haven't had the time to prepare a written report of any kind for the fires that we've had. Um, if people aren't aware, uh, we had the Big Horn Fire, which is just over fifty thousand acres. Um, we released all the evac levels, uh, yesterday. And the, uh, incident management team reported this morning that they're going to, um, probably demobilize and turn it back over. Um, to the locals either the end of the day today or tomorrow. Um, we did also in just the last few hours have another fire start along Highway fourteen, about three or four. Five miles into Benton County, so right on the edge of. Uh, the far east edge of the Big Horn Fire. So the state mobilization team sent resources to help with that. As low as we had, uh, requests for. Fire District Ten out of Alderdale to go assist Benton County. So they're fighting that as we speak. And whether those two tie together, um, remains to be seen, but if they do, then that will probably keep our incident management team here to. To work on that as well. The other fire, uh, I'm not sure if it got an official name, the DNR probably. did, but, uh, the Cloudville Fire that started on Saturday, late afternoon, evening. I don't have an acreage on that. Nobody on fire scene reported it. We kept evacs in place until yesterday with the Cloudville, uh, residences, um, specifically, and then released those. And then the Indian Hill, uh, radio site was impacted by the Microwave Tower Fire, uh, in Hood River County, Oregon. East of Hood River. And that caused the, uh, generator fail. Um, after the second day it had been on backup power because that, that fire started just a couple of hours before our Big Horn Fire started on Monday.
So did the generator like burn in the fire or did it just run and burn itself up while it was running?
Um, well, I haven't sent a fire investigator to look at that, but the generator tech, um, it could have been a combination of the heat from the fire that came close.
And sucking.
And the smoke that flogged the air filters, um, that then caused it to overheat and, and ruin the engine. And the report from the, uh, the Armanus provider was that it would cost more to troubleshoot that and figure out what was wrong with it and what it might take to repair that, the existing one, than it was worth. It is, um, one of those generators in our system that, um, is not public safety grade that we've discussed many times. And, um, it is somewhere, I didn't pin it down, but all five of those in our system are anywhere between 21 years and 23 years old currently. And so they're way past their expected life. So it wasn't surprising that it did fail, but it was very unfortunate, uh, and especially the timing.
Okay, so questions I have. Is this quote for essentially $48,000 that one generator?
That's correct. And the installation that goes along with it, everything that.
I, I, well, we're getting there. I was thinking that 45-ish thousand was for two generators.
No.
I guess I'm curious on their math. It says one electrician, four days, 10 hours a day, two gen techs, four days, 10 hours a day. But the PM's only for three techs for three nights. I guess, yeah, I don't know. The generators, for those that don't know, the generator's 19,000, labor's 17,000. And I'm like, I'm in the wrong way in the business. I need to be a generator installer, I guess, and a concrete. I mean, what do you pay for concrete? It's fair, board, you know, I, I need to go, I'm in the wrong way in the business. Have we, have we shopped at all? Or have you shopped in the past?
We have in the past.
Make sure we're getting a decent, fair and reputable deal. You can assure me of that part?
Yes. And, um, we have worked with this vendor, well, not a vendor, this, um, provider, service provider for many years. And they have always done us, um, the best they could. The fact that they were able to do the emergency response and not only, uh, replace the transfer switch at that site because the one that was there would not match up with the, um, trailer generator we got on loan from Hood River County Sheriff's Office. We actually sent someone there, uh, and unplugged it from their 911 center and all that up there that night because they are in our Indian Hill site. That is a hub for them, like stacker is for us for their microwave. So when that site failed for four hours, they were without radio, public safety radio, uh, for most of their county.
So how many different entities, public entities use that site?
Uh, just the two of us.
Do they have their own generator or they piggybacking on our generator?
No, they're, they, the site uses one generator.
How do we pay the full price of the generator and it not be a shared cost?
That's n- not the way those things work. In that, we're responsible for it as the site owners.
So how do we? I guess essentially, I, that makes sense to me. I would imagine we would pay or charge them for their share of it through the lease. That just gets tacked on to whatever their lease payment is. Uh, or included in the lease. Let's just put it that way.
And what I'm being told by, um, uh, I guess in this case it would be the risk manager. Uh, uh, Director Van Cleve is that it's highly likely, I think he's actually looked into it. I didn't talk to him at length. Um, Lori did. Um, it can be recovered on insurance with a $10,000 deductible. Um, as well as like, uh, Jen and I talked to you about this morning, that the first options. Well, even the $10,000 if we, if insurance covers it and we pay the 10,000, if there is a, a federal declaration or some other funding mechanism uh, related to this fire that we can take advantage of, then a percentage of that $10,000 would then be covered.
How dare you and Rob steal my thunder. I was gonna tell you that we just went over insurance earlier with the deductibles.
Well, we're doing our job and due diligence in any way we can in the midst of all of this.
I, yeah, and I'm right, but it's my job to question and make sure, double checking, everybody did what they should be doing.
And I wasn't questioning that.
Um.
Trying to reassure you.
Yep, no, no, no.
And.
Now, the question is, I guess I would say the next phase of this is obviously the insurance company might be able to cover a lot of it this time because it was an emergency. It broke. It was a failure of something that's probably insured. I would hope it's insured. Um, by our insurance company. If not, we need to reevaluate all our 911 towers to make sure they're insured. But I can't imagine. But that doesn't get us down the road to figuring out how we're paying for the other ones that are about to fail or going to be ready to fail, that won't be an insurance claim. Um, unless you just order one, have it on standby in the garage, ready to slap in when it does fail.
Um, and now that we've come to this point in the, in the in the life cycle of those five generators, which will now be four, hopefully, um, to have a, a portable backup option like we had to deploy on Tuesday night and Wednesday for this situation of our own is definitely something I'm going to figure out and hope to get support for because it will, you know, there will be.
What kind of portable backup? Are we just talking a Honda 3000 or something?
It could be if we want to just keep the basics of the radio equipment. However, not only because of the, the weather and the ambient temperature, but because of the fire impinging on that site. Um, I don't remember when we lost power at that site. The radio equipment's on backup power. I think it lasted somewhere between four and five hours. However, the shelter doesn't have any HVAC without grid power or generator power. So it reached 90 degrees inside that shelter, um, within a couple of hours because of all the equipment, plus the outside temperature, plus the fire. Um, yeah, so, um, the need is there to be able to do a rapid response. Otherwise, at about 106 degrees, um, that equipment starts to fail. Because the, the shelter temperature, and I've had to learn way more about all this over the years, uh, is, is significantly less than the internal temperature of those computers, basically, the radio equipment. Uh, and it's the internal temperature that we need to be most concerned of. We have one alarm that tells us what that is.
Do you not have a, uh, air conditioning stuck in a wall, running on emergency backup? As well, is, is.
Not on battery. That's, that's not. We, we would have to invest in a serious.
Right, but it, but it does run on generator power.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, everything, uh, worked initially. Um, when this power outage occurred, it, and that, the, the power went out. I don't have exact times because that, like I said, that was the same time roughly as Big Horn took off.
Right.
And I became dedicated to that as well as this, uh, incident. And but somewhere right at the beginning of the Microwave Tower Fire, we lost grid power at Indian Hill. And that generator ran until, that was Monday afternoon sometime. It ran successfully. The, the site and the systems all ran correctly until sometime on Tuesday, uh, early afternoon. Then the generator failed and because that failing caused, uh, the alarms to send out things that weren't normal. It wasn't what you would expect. So we had to investigate that. And then decide what the actual status of it was, remote into the equipment remotely, um, by the techs. And then I started deploying people there immediately. Um, especially once the high temperature alarm went on.
Next question. Um, the four other of these Generac or whatever we're using home generator. Um, that are getting to be timed out that will need to be replaced in the next few years. When's the, do we, do we do call a tech to go do the rounds and do a maintenance once a year on all five of them and?
That's correct. Uh, yeah, we, we, um, have annual PMs done on those.
Check the oil level, check their filter, radio.
Uh, usually sometime in June, depending on the snow, uh, at the laptop site, as early as we can get them in there.
Well, I find no faults with what you're doing, sir.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that you've researched and knew the answer to every weird question I asked. Um, with that, I don't want to sign this, but I feel a need, I need to sign. So I will be signing this.
Okay. And, and also the, so to kind of add on to your questions and where they're leading is on the capital improvement project list for 2025. Two of these generators were on my request to, um, replace because of all the issues we've discussed. And it was this exact generator.
It was the top of the list?
Uh, that, this is the one that we need. It's public safety grade, five-year warranty, 2,000 hours, aluminum case. I mean, it's, it's built for this environment and this duty cycle, unlike the ones that are currently in place at those five sites. So that research had already been done and we're waiting to see what you would approve next year.
I guess for me, it's very hard to authorize the Taj Mahal generators when the Home Depot option has been working for 20 years. But all it takes is for it to not work. And two people or 20 people or 200 people dying because I was cheap. Um, I won't do that, sir.
And that would be the case that I would make. They have operated to a certain level, but when, not without issue, as I've reported many, many times. It's cost us so much money in emergency, uh, maintenance, response, and my time and energy. And we've suffered several.
And if you're paying techs, when you're paying techs here constantly.
Yeah. And several outages. In this one case, it was four hours of public safety radio outage. Uh, we were on backup to the engine, like, White Salmon and surrounding areas.
Okay. So what, what do you, I'm sorry to finish me off anyway. What are you asking for? Do you have a document for us to sign today to authorize? Or are you just giving us a rush? And putting it on the agenda for next week? Or what's the plan?
I think.
Signing a document today? Okay. So are you requesting a motion or are you done with any questions?
Do we need to ask, is Mr. Anderson still online? Do you have questions?
I don't have any questions. I know while it is expensive, these, uh, generators, we've spent just as much money sending techs up there in the winter time. And so I understand where Director King is coming from and it's too bad that, uh, that it went out when it did, but we need to get it replaced.
I agree. Okay, so I am.
How hard this is. For someone who's.
At the risk of belaboring the point of, yeah, your characterization of them being the Taj Mahal, um, I will.
There's bigger and better out there.
There are. But what I would say is, these are the appropriate generators for this site because we have this style and better at three of our sites that were, um, specced originally in the project and weren't cut for savings.
And I'm assuming we have that at the new one that we just.
Yep, Public Works and myself worked at diligently.
And slapped accordingly, sir.
As that generator and in its own shelter.
Well, and in my own personal life, I've dealt with cheap generators and didn't go for the one that was written, paid the price.
My Generac's still holding strong. I love that.
You didn't have to say the name.
Um, although I just had my Honda 3000 upgraded because of my turn this out of the question. Uh, if you're looking for a motion or are we just looking for verbal signage? What are we looking for? Need to have a motion. Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we sign the authorization to purchase for economic development to purchase a legacy power system. Uh, generator for the Indian Hill radio site with the estimated total cost of $48,934.11.
Dude, is it economic development purchase?
Uh, emergency management, if I said that incorrectly.
Thank you.
Well, I'll second emergency management.
I will. Yeah, because next thing you know, they want to put one into the airport too. So, yeah.
Be happy if you.
I'll let him deal with it.
The motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
One of the hardest things I've ever signed here.
Okay.
Got a 20-year guarantee on that. I didn't ask about the warranty.
Five years, 2,000 hours.
No change in your mind now? Yeah.
That was the only due diligence question I didn't already ask, so.
Yes, we'll go forward with Jen Neal, uh, coming back before we do the first amendment audits. Yeah, Jen was waiting. Thank you.
Yeah. So first it was Your Honor and then it was economic development. So.
It's that tea.
Don't let me have tea for lunch anymore.
Okay, well, I'm back, um, because there was, there's been some questions in regards to budget process. And, um, the plan for this, this budget build year going forward. So I figured I would just start from the very beginning, um, and clarify, um, the budget process statutorily. And then go into what was my plan and, and how, um, I had intended this year to go. So I handed out, um, a document that's from MRSC where they, they outline the budget, um, statutes and RCW into steps. Um, obviously we do an annual budget, not a biannual for those listening. Um, free budget items, those are not statutory, but those are things that, um, we tried to talk about, um, going into the new year, but we don't always really dig too deep into them.
We're missing out on these budget retreats. Where are these at?
I, you know.
I haven't seen any of these.
Some counties have some really great ones, it sounds like. Um, so step one, you know, the, um, statutorily, it's the auditor, um, or it lists the CFO, um, CFO comes with a charter county. We are not a charter county and I am not the CFO. Um, so they would start and they handle the auditor technically by statute handles all the preliminaries, the collection of data, um, compiling it and presenting it to the commissioners, where the commissioners then take over that budget. Um, the preliminary budget, the first Tuesday in September. Um, and then we go through, well, the rest of the steps, workshops, making modifications to what's been proposed and, um, and then budget hearings.
But this is for charter county stuff, right?
No, this is for all, all counties. They just list some of the charter counties' stuff within there.
Okay, that's, I was getting a little, I'm like, this, some of this ain't even us.
Correct.
Okay.
Or GMA stuff. Um, yeah. So I'm not going to read through all of that by any means. Just wanted to touch, touch base on, um, September is the first Tuesday in September is a statutory deadline for the preliminaries to be presented to the board. Um, we do hold two public hearings. Um, we do them on the same day, the same time we hold the one before. And then we close it and hold the other. Um, the, so the first phases of our budget process, everything goes into the budget build work prior to the first Tuesday. The, so the first phases of our budget process, everything goes into the budget build work prior to the first Tuesday of September. Lie with the county auditor or in charter counties, the CFO. Um, like I said, we're not a charter county and I am not the CFO. When I took this position, the budgets were turned into the auditor by departments and offices. The auditor prepped the estimate sheet, loaded the budgets into. Uh, a specific budget level within Cuyana. Um. When I came into the position with a great relationships already built with the auditor's office, um, Brenda Swordson and Heather Joby. Uh, this allowed for myself and the auditor to work together to create efficiencies, reduce the double work. Provide a process that documents budget entries and stores original entries with the ability to compare modified budgets within our financial system. Um, as well as document date and timestamps of all entries and changes within the sheets. These efficiencies that we created has saved the county taxpayer dollars approximately fifteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars a year. Um. This was able to happen for the first time in years here in Clickcat County due solely. Um, to the relationships, trusts and teamwork fostered. Um, when I came into this position, I found that the many, there were many. Who were disgruntled with how my position had handled budgets in the past. Um, so Rob and I have made it a, a point to be diligent about transparency with departments as well as the public. Communicating and sensitive to their feelings and their needs. Um. How the auditor and myself work together today and have since twenty twenty two. Um, starts in January without um, with outlining the budget calendar, which I present to both the, to all of you. Um, a plan to address the budget year, kind of the outline of how we're going to handle workshops and propose those things to the commissioners. Um, in order to meet those statutory deadlines. Um, I hold a meeting with the directors and electeds early in, early on in the year. Usually I do it. February, March. This year was a little different because of um, directives that I was given on a project, so.
What is this meeting for?
The meeting that I hold with directors.
Meeting.
Um, it's a training meeting for the most part, um, as well as. By that time I have the year end analysis done and I'm able to present some financial health of the county. Um, so every year coming into this role. You know, I've been telling the directors and the other elected officials. This is where the county is heading financially. This is what we're looking at. Um, so that they have awareness, you know, they own part of it too. Um. So. I've been evolving that meeting. Um, to take those next steps going forward. Um, last year I involved Pam with Public Works to do some training on Cuyana. I involved um. Greg. To do some training on accounts receivable and things that he would like to see consistently out of departments.
And you're doing this training with the department and officers.
All in the same day. And, and I do it virtually as well, so everybody can attend. Um. So typically, I would get the directive, the budget directive from the board because I have more time with you than the auditor. Um, we, the auditor and myself work together on drafting a budget memo or what we call the call for budgets. Um, I handle the detailed late work of the process. I utilize software such as Google Sheets and Smart Sheets because they capture the activity with. The person's name, date, time, and the type of activity. So if I was going to go into Smart Sheets or Google Sheets, it would record that I went in there. I went to this row. I made this change, date and timestamp it. Um. And the programs do that automatically and you can go back and pull that activity. What that means is that there's a record of change within all the programs that I use. Um, these programs also have dynamic commenting features so that we're able to have a communication thread. Directors, budget staff, um, and myself, if there's anything that I see amiss. Um.
Clarification, though. Commissioners don't have a budget thread.
Correct. The commissioners do not have access to this because you cannot do.
Otherwise, it might be an open public meeting violation. Just wanted to fill that up.
You do not. So um, Smart Sheets originally is a project management program and the budget is exactly that, a seventy million dollar project. Um, that has roughly fifty employees working on it simultaneously. Um, and I'm just kind of overseeing all of that management of it. Um, with the process change. That the auditor and myself have made, I'm able to utilize the budget level that the auditor would have normally used. Um, so once I have a clean version of what the departments submit to me. Um, I would all upload it into the auditor's old budget level that they would upload into.
What's a clean version?
I'll get to that.
Okay.
Um. Which then allows me to really have captured within the financial system, the original budget submitted by departments. And then we go into budget workshops where the board makes changes, makes modifications to those budgets. And I'm able to upload all of those changes and modifications. Um, at one time rather than line item by line item in a completely different budget level. So now the financial system. Has secured reporting of original versus modified. Whereas that didn't happen before. It saves me a considerable amount of time. It takes a long time to go in there and it's challenging to go in there and. And correct line item by line item or modify line item by line item, run the report, see where we're at. Have to go in and change it. It also decreases human error because. It, that doing it that way just opens up the door for a lot of error. Um. And of course, historical data is saved within the financial system at that point in time rather than in somebody else's. Um, Excel file or what have you on their computer. So what goes into getting a clean version of the proposed budgets? Verifying all entries because. Um, the budget instructions is as simple as I can make it. People are still people. I'm the person that only reads bullet points. I know I'm that person who doesn't read thoroughly and. All the instructions. Other people don't either. So I go in and verify that the instructions were followed and that those entries are made. Um, I look for all non-entries. Uh, there's always somebody who miskeyed a portion of their budget and, or the board has made changes. Um, and when you guys make changes, there tends to be loose ends and I clean up those loose ends. So WSU, um, the coroner, Department of Corrections, nobody's been assigned to do those budgets. So I, I tend to clean up those types of things. Um. I address all the knowns that I don't see in the budget. So the things that come through. This room that I have a, a note on, like I try to keep notes throughout the year, um, try to remember. To make sure that people are actually budgeting them where they need to be. VRNR is a prime example. Somebody gets purchase authorization for a vehicle. They budget the transfer out, but it doesn't, they don't communicate it all the way through and it doesn't get budgeted out of the VRNR fund. Those types of things. Um. Case of PETA projects are another one. Um, or if the board verbally promises to grant X amount of dollars to somebody. Um, those things I try to capture so that when we're looking at the budget as a whole. Um, you're looking at everything, not outliers. Oh, we still have this that we have to put in there. Remember that. Um. Typically, there is. A significant amount of clerical errors. When, when departments are entering their budgets into these Google Sheets. Um. So I verify all those clerical errors. I look for them, try to find them, make those corrections. The biggest one is usually. People enter revenues as a positive number when they have to be entered as an, a negative number and that'll throw the budget off a half a million dollars easily. So I go and make those corrections for them. Um, I look for any missed keys, extra zeros, decimal points, those types of things. Um. Or correct any, any entries that are in locations that are not supposed to be, you know. They were instructed not to put insurance in their budget. If they put insurance in there, make sure I delete it so that. We're looking at everything apples to apples through every single department. Um, or budgeting benefits on itemized line items rather than just the budget line. Um, and it's duplicating. Um, the amount of expense. I'm using these examples that I currently see in there right now. So um. With, with that being said, those clerical errors I make for those departments and, and directors and elected offices. So that they don't have to answer for them and we're actually looking at the budget as to what it's supposed to be. Um. I verify that all budgets are balanced. If, if they have, if they're a special revenue fund, their, their credits and their debits have to balance. They have to net zero. So I make sure that those do that. Usually the case happens when maybe they're not budgeting um, fund balance. The right way cuz that one, the use of fund balance or gain of fund balance confuses a lot of people. Because it's the opposite of what you would think it would be when you enter it. I tie out the transfers in and the transfers out and make those corrections as needed. VRNR is another prime example of that. You have multiple departments and funds that are transferring out. But nobody ever catches the transfer in to the VRNR fund. So I have to make sure that those all equal the same amount and net out. Um. I pull all landfill requests. To see what those came in at because everybody budgets landfill requests. As. As they want it basically. Um. And. Then identify if that's even remotely close to what's forecasted to come in. Usually it's not. Usually it's a million or two over.
Oh, yeah.
So. Then, then I pull any um, cumulative reserves requests. Verify those. Get with the, get with the director if they have one that's out of the norm to figure out what that's from. Um, like I said, I verify VRNR purchase requests. I tie out um. All those, all those transfers for VRNR. And. I pull all major um, general purpose revenues that are highlighted in pieces by budget of, or offices. And make sure that those are all going to tie out and come in as to what we forecast them. So there are certain taxes that get. That each department budgets a portion of. But then when you look at it at the big picture, it might not be anywhere near what we anticipate that to come in at. An easy one for an example is tar, um, timber harvest tax. Gets budgeted in two different locations. Um, what we originally found was one location was budgeting different than the other location and neither one met the actual forecasted amount that we anticipated. So there, there are those items that I go through. Um. And use, as well as the investments and um, and the landfill. And have those meetings with um, the treasurer because he is the keeper of the, the revenue and see if he's. Forecasting the same as I'm forecasting cuz two brands are better than one. Um. And that all takes place before we bring that um, budget to the board. So. Any changes that have um, historically been to increase. What was originally budgeted and or change the request from the landfill and other revenue sources. Um, historically, I've not gone in on my own and reduced somebody's expense budget without directive of the board. Um, and without communicating. So. To this point, an adjustment to reduce the request has not happened at this stage. Without directive of the board. We only do reductions of. Expense sides of the budget through those workshops with the board. Um. Expense reductions has not been made at this stage. I just want to reiterate that. I, I do not have the authority to do that. Um, in prior years, I've contacted departments that did not follow the board's directive. Um, to have a discussion and see if they can meet the original directive. I've done that. Um, and for those who couldn't, we've had the discussion as to why. Um, and. I assist with them presenting to the board why they need an increase to their budget.
But clarification, you're not changing. If a department has a budget they want to submit. It's not going to you and you changing their numbers before it gets to us.
Right, no, no. And if it's a, but if, if it's above directive, it's not, if it's not status quo directive. Then I will, I will call them and be like, hey, and you know, if they said, oh, we have this out. You know, we have this here. Oh, I can help you explain that to the board or present that to the board.
Okay, and that was my question because a couple paragraphs back, we were talking about. The different budgets with the landfill uh, or different money and if those looked. Like over the top that it's not going to meet what that budget is that you said I get with the directors and then we have that discussion. And. I think I had concerns at that point that that discussion really belongs with the board. Uh, for where they're going with that. So I'm glad to hear that. You know, there isn't um, a direction or a discussion there about someone changing a budget before the board sees what they'd like to ask for. And that discussion with the board.
Hmm, I guess in, to answer that question, no, um, I, I do not. Um, call a department and say you need to change this because this is above and beyond. What I will do though is I will let them know, hey. I see that you have this. This is not, with landfill, it's typically, it, there are a handful of. Departments that historically get landfill year after year, whatever. So. Sometimes an outlier will come in and be like, well, I, I need some landfill dollars and it'll be that and I will be like. I will call them and ask for clarification as to why they need that. Um. If it's going to come in over what landfill is going to project, I will offer other revenue sources. Because I'm not going to budget landfill at a number that is going to not be. Um, is not attainable.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to stop you cuz now we're on to the second question and I'm gonna lose track of the questions. So for clarification, if I'm. The Joe Blow Department and I've always gotten fifty grand in landfill funds to help subsidize my department. And I put up a other budget this year and say fifty grand in landfill funds, you're not gonna have a problem with it. It's only if I ask for seventy thousand landfill runs. Or an increase that you're gonna say, hey, being at that, just so you know. And might come up with an alternative source. That's what you're talking about, right?
Correct, and I wouldn't, and I wouldn't even say like. That I would just, I would ask, hey, I noticed that you submitted for landfill. Why? Um, what's your reasoning? Cuz that's gonna be a question that it's going to ask me too. And um, and then kind of go from there. See, see why. Maybe there's another revenue source that's better. They just didn't know.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I, I believed that's what you were doing.
Yes.
But I wasn't sure if the way it was worded, if all landfill was running through you or only the, the new. People that want more or new.
No, the, it's the board's directive on whether they want to fund the landfill dollars at. Um. I'm just trying to get a realistic. Um, preliminary budget. Put together for you to be able to see things from that higher level. Um. So did that answer?
Where did you leave off, by the way? What were you talking about when we left off?
I have it, right?
I know, but I figured you'd give me a quick second cuz then I might be able to figure out what my second question was cuz that had to do with what you just said.
Oh.
Red Bull got smashed in about an hour this morning. The damn sweet tea.
Um, landfill dollars, proposals, revenue adjustments. Okay. Commissioners, did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so my plan for this year's budget was to um. Have my review meeting with the other eyes of the budget um. Budget team, who I call the budget team, which is. Um, a meeting that I, I usually have with um, the auditor and the treasurer. Um. Ahead of time to, so that they get another set of eyes on the budget to make sure I didn't miss any clerical errors. Um, that my revenue forecasts are in line with what they would expect those to be. Um. And if the auditor is um, happy with how I've pulled together this information to be able to present. Is ultimately that it is part of her statutory duty, so.
But they're not making any decisions.
No.
Budgetary decisions, revenue decisions.
No.
Just making recommendations to this board, correct?
Correct. Um.
Jake's got his hand up.
Jake. We can't hear you.
Sorry, uh, I was gonna wait for it to be done, but I believe, how did we get last year? We started out and there was, it was a two or four million dollars. And then you guys had your meeting with the treasurer and the auditor and then uh before it even came to us. We'd, we'd shaved a million or two off. Can you talk a little bit about that, Jen?
Yes, absolutely. So it was a four million dollar deficit that we started off with um in the general fund. Last year, um I held this meeting. And we went through all of it where we adjusted all of the clerical errors. And the revenue numbers that we were looking at. So we felt that we could increase. Interest earnings revenue from what was originally budgeted. Um so we went with a number that um myself and Greg Gallagher and, and Heather. Could comfortably present to the board.
But again, that's a recommendation. This board can give me number at once.
Absolutely. But the preliminaries are the recommendations, right? So those are the proposed recommendations. And um so the, so that's what we went through all of, all of those. Bullet points that I talked about, um all of those steps I went through with them together and I believe Rob was in the room for most of it as well. And made those adjustments. And it's just, the majority of it was just clerical errors. To the sum of two million dollars.
Um, I don't know if that finished his question. He's not speaking, so I'm assuming I got him answered. Question I have is on VRNR. So Lee used to do the VRNR stuff and then when she left. You were happy to assume, we were happy to shuffle it. We think it'd be done. But it's my understanding that you do some of the VRNR, but we still do some here. Can you explain? What pieces or parts gets done there or gets done here and why it isn't all.
Well, I don't believe there's been directive of the board to, to move it.
It used to be, I, I know and you know, I am the biggest person that says we. Should never be mentioned by a single commissioner because that means you're speaking for them. So I would apologize. I believe I. I think the directive of the previous board after Lee left was to get that BRNR into your lap. Because you would be catching it closer.
We had discussions and I do remember having discussions with you, but the board as a whole did not direct any change at all. But so um part, part of it. I handle the rental rate calculations. And, and I put those out in phase one. The rest of the VRNR, the purchase authorizations and the, and whatnot. All flows through the commissioner's office.
Right. But I guess my question is. If it, remember that muting your cell phone thing I talked about like half an hour ago? She's trying to mute it and calling him. She's just trying to get me to lose my train of thought. I think it, I don't know whether you want it or not, but I think it'd alleviate some of the things of the VRNR, like the latest VRNR retire chains. If, if things like that go through your office, you're gonna catch them where they may not get caught here. You're gonna catch them doing the vouchers. You're gonna catch them doing new vehicle purchases that they may not get caught here. And I thought. At least, I guess I'd say I thought it was getting transferred to your apartment or maybe my head just said it is without telling you it is. And that's a discussion I need to have with them, which I'll do. I'll wait for Jake to get back. So he's not wherever he is and then have that discussion. But fair warning, I'm gonna try to shove that right at you. Well, and I think it'd be the best thing for the county, which is, I'm not trying to punish you. I just think it would.
I, you know, this subject did come up and I've walked through it for a couple, three weeks and looked at all sides of it because I wasn't familiar with it. And I agree, there needs to be a change. It needs to be in one place. It's not making sense.
But I don't.
But, but we'll have.
I don't necessarily want to make a big enough decision like that when I'm not exactly sure the commissioner Anderson's getting everything we're saying. So I would rather wait until he comes back in the room where he has an, an opportunity to argue pro or against. And knows exactly what we're talking about. We're not in a big hurry, so I'm, I'm fine.
I hear, I hear, I, I'm hearing everything you guys are saying. Um I think it's a great discussion that we have during the budget cycle and we can make that decision.
That works.
Yep, no, I'm. Budget, non-budget, whenever down the road, we'll have it.
We have to be mindful. Chair and I've talked about this. Sometimes it makes sense to move something from A to B. Then that adds more B or B has to give something to C. This shifting work. Never really goes away.
Yes, but if I can shift work to where there's less issues, less problems, less.
And it's organized.
Finance things go to finance things. Building things go to building things. Sometimes people were doing things that they probably should have never been doing to begin with.
Just as because it, because it's the way we've always done it, doesn't mean it's the way we should do it.
I agree. I, all I'm saying is let's have the discussion. And we'll allow everybody to come in and tell us, don't do it that way. Or do it that way. I want to have that discussion. That's all I'm asking.
Where were we?
I don't know. I just threw a stick of dynamite at her, I think. She's about ready to cry on me.
So. So the first stage was to have this, to get the estimates, um have this meeting. Uh with the auditor and the treasurer to make sure things were tied out and I wasn't the only eyes on the budget because. As you're well aware, it's a five hundred page document. Then my plan was to hold a meeting with directors and the electeds as, as I do typically. And to build upon it as I do with everything year after year since I've been in this position. Um to really foster team building out of this meeting with them, uh to let them know where we are. And to, to have a brainstorming session of opportunities that they, they may see. They are the experts in their department. And those brainstorming sessions would be. Potential proposals for cost savings and or revenue sources that could be presented to the board for your options. How well that meeting would go, I don't know. But until I get in it. Um, I won't know. So.
That's an interesting idea. A new idea and people don't like new things or indoor change. So you're not going into that meeting. Telling people, hey, look, you need to figure out what you're cutting. Uh it's just a more of a brainstorm. I mean, hear people out. You're not making decisions or telling them what to do. Yeah, okay. I'm just clarifying, make sure I understood what you said.
They all own a piece of this budget in some regards. They have departmental budgets. They submit those budgets to you for your. For um your approval or not. Um so. Offering them the space to be able to help brainstorm the future.
Right. And some own the budget more than others, public health.
Yeah.
They don't get a dollar. So what brainstorming helps me. Um so I, no, I'm, I'm okay. I'm, I'm following.
And, and change is hard. And people have a hard time with change. And sometimes we get involved in conversations about change or things that are uncomfortable. And for me, um when you talk about building on your process, year after year to improve and go forward. It may be a wise idea to run that past the commissioners first and say, this is where I'm going. This is what I'd like to do. What do you think? Because then when we hear things on the back door, then we can answer those questions and say, yes, we've discussed that with Jen and that's an appropriate way. Because when you say they own a piece of the budget, statutorily at the very end, it's us. They'd have to answer for that. So I would like to know upfront. Where the design is going. What are the ideas? How are we gonna build that? And where's, you know, who, what, when and why? And then I can answer.
So I'll make sure to have, um I, in the future, absolutely. I, I, I've had these conversations since like early on, but I'm not doing it every department update. So I will add it to every department update.
It's one of those that I remember now that you mentioned it, that it, it was talked at least at some point.
Yeah, I believe my first.
But I don't know that we ever said, yeah, go. So I, I can understand where she's coming from. Uh just to give us more of a heads up. Uh and give department heads and whatnot a heads up or electeds too, because they're gonna be in that thing.
Yeah, so they know we're having those conversations that we know.
Yeah, yep. And like I said, I, yeah, I touched on it a couple of times, I think my first of the year and then last Tuesday.
But touching on it isn't the same as us buying it.
I understand.
I don't think I need to vote.
I, I, I couldn't.
Go ahead, Jake. There he is.
Thank you. I uh, I personally think that Jen is doing an absolutely wonderful job with the budget.
Turn your video off, Jake.
And I don't. And I don't have any issues um with her being creative and having discussions with the directors because in the end. She's just trying to uh help. Make sure that the budget that comes before us is something that she thinks that we, we could be adopting. Uh with regards to how the budget is. She knows the budget inside and out. She knows the numbers inside and out. And she knows when somebody's bringing us something or is going to try to bring us something that likely we'll just be like, I'm sorry, we just don't have the money. So. I like to give uh staff as much latitude as possible, um knowing that we are the final say, but I have no issues with what she's doing.
And I guess for me, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with how it's all sounded today. But if, if it, I, I want to make sure that we were the ones elected. We get to make the choices. We get to be the ones to tell people no or yes, that they're not shut down before they get here. So as long as that's not happening, I don't really care. But I do believe if we, right, it, but if we had the clarification in a meeting like this. It might stop any potential rumor mill that's out there, that that might be what's happening. So I think she fixes the problem that, yeah, so all in all, and as long as you get two of these or you go for it.
So I guess back to um what Rob was asking was, okay, if I, I bring it before the board and the board on Tuesday was like, sounds good. So do we need a vote to like solidify that?
But I don't think I was hearing the same thing that was brought forward. I'm seeing a much different process than what was presented that now we've had discussions about. And my problem with um. What Jake was talking about and the process as it's being structured and evolving is that idea of public open transparency. And if we are having discussions with departments about money. That belongs in this room with the, with the commissioners. And that belongs for the public being able to hear what decisions we're making and why we make those.
Well, and absolutely. And those things are happening and they're not outside of that. The board provides a directive. And the discussions that I have with them is to ensure that they want to present what they've presented if it's outside that directive. And how can I help you do so?
I just want to make sure we're all saying the same thing. It could be just me that's confused. So the conversations that Jen's having with folks putting their budgets together is to. Put a budget together to bring to the commissioners. Are you suggesting that as a department is preparing their budget, you want them to bring that to the commissioners to find out? So it'd be almost like a pre-budget discussion.
Preliminary.
If, if I can maybe clean it up, what I think is being said is. If, I guess the question comes down to if you're having the discussions with departments on what potential cost savings. They might be able to foresee that all of those potential cost savings are coming from that department. And not ideas we're giving them. So that they're essentially changing what they want to submit before it gets here because somebody told them they should change it. Uh that just made it, that just made it best.
I'm not trying to tell them that they have to change it by any means.
Or cut this person or that person or any of that kind of.
That's not my, that's not my place. Um the board's directive was status quo. We all know, I don't think of a budget. And one-year increments. And I might be the only person in, in the county that doesn't. I think at least three years out. Hey, so in order to get to where we need to be three years from now. We've got to have these conversations. And if I could do some of the legwork for the commissioners and getting, helping the directors and the other electeds. Start thinking outside of their own department and think of the county as a whole, the budget as a whole, see it as a whole. They're the experts in their field. They might be able to come up with some brainstorming ideas to be able to present the, to the board to help you. Navigate the budget. In the future years.
You're asking an awful lot for all of these individual sandboxes.
I am, I am.
You realize they're part of the bigger sandbox when they've never had to do that. In thirty, forty years.
And I'm confident in, in my relationships with the majority that we are able to take steps to stride. Towards where we need to be three to five years from.
As a whole.
As a whole.
Because unlike you, I'm, I'm thinking three, four steps ahead. Um it's, it's a puzzle. It's chess. It's strategy. It's military strategy.
Balances and, and the chair and I've had this conversation a couple of times. I mean, if, if at any point. All the elected officials and department directors uh have an op- opportunity or, or right to, to sit in this chair. And if somebody felt like they didn't get something in their budget they wanted in there, I suspect there's not a lot of shy people around here. They would bring that to your attention.
There's a lot of shy people that would not sit there and say that, but they would say it on the phone or in a private meeting because they don't want to sit there and say.
I agree.
So, but not one of them are not at least going to whisper it in one ear or the other. So we will know about it if it happens.
And, and again, everything's timestamped, documented. Changes are all. On paper. So I mean.
And, and all the problem, all the software um programs used from the very beginning when it was Google Sheets. Um well, that wasn't the very beginning, but my beginning, it was Google Sheets.
Yeah, and to your beginning, it was Attic, Abacus before you got there.
In this position, yes, but um Google Sheets, it, if I go in and make a change in there or correction, my name is tied to it. Date and timestamp and it highlights the cell that I changed.
I'm actually intrigued. With your theory of meeting with them and seeing what potential. Revenue cuts or changes they can make. I think there, it's, it's a double edged sword. And I do believe they would be more candid or more open with you. Uh not on a Zoom meeting where they can actually talk about stuff and people. That they don't want to talk about right here. So I think. Part of me thinks that could be really helpful. Uh but part of me thinks I want to be in that meeting.
Yeah.
But I can't be in that meeting unless we're all in that meeting and then the Zoom's on. So it's, it's a double edged sword.
If I was able to, and I understand that and, and your desires and the, and I'm assuming all three of your desires to wanna. To hear that, see that. My, my intention was to bring back the proposals to the board and we would start with that initial meeting. Again, I don't foresee. Cost savings really to come about because the board's already cut year after year into these budgets. Where we need to go in the future.
There is cost savings out there, but they're difficult decisions that I don't know that people have enough courage to make even in your private meeting.
Those decisions are not for directors. Those are for board decisions.
But recommendations can come from.
Recommendations could come from. And regardless of what I was saying, we, we are not going to get to where we need three years down the road by just cutting. It's not going to get there. We have to come up with alternative revenue sources. And um I have full faith that, that this group of directors and other elected officials can work together as a team to really. Put together some proposals of what options are out there. Maybe there's grant funding. Maybe there's um, I don't know, some other sort of revenue source out of the revenue guide that we don't take advantage of. That's not gonna cancel out something else.
I know a lot of people don't want to hear this, but we, we still tend to do things. backwards in the sense that we don't have a strategic plan that we budget to. The budget is the fuel for the plan. We don't have a countywide plan that everybody builds their budget around, which would include mandates, of course. So we, you know, we're we're trying to do it differently, but we budget first and then that's where people put their plans in as opposed to having a plan and then budgeting to it. But otherwise, if if we do it all through cuts, we're just managing the decline of the county until at some point there isn't a functioning county.
Working process for me, taking it from a different view, taking it from the department views. We build on an effort year after year and move forward to forge that effort. And we're going to communicate with the commissioners if they approve of those steps to build that. But do we have the buy-in of the departments? And have we discussed that with them? And does it work for them? What are their concerns? What do they see? And is this a burden or is this a plus? Or how does that work for them?
Well, that.
Because that is our very important relationship with those directors.
And that was going to be part of my meeting with them.
But it should be with the commissioners to ask those questions. We we're we direct the directors. We're the head of the directors and to simply send staff to have that tough discussion with them of a change.
I don't think I'm understanding your question.
That's where I'm at.
To have, to call for a meeting and there's changes coming and you present those changes and they don't hear it from us. It puts you in the hot seat and it puts questions of whose decision was this really? Is it Jen pushing her own ideals? Or has the commissioners approved this and we're moving forward? Because you're calling for the meeting. You're informing the people and they haven't heard from us.
Fair enough. You know, like I said, every year I I would hold a training. I would hold a meeting with these directors and these electeds and I would cover training and I would cover the financial health of the county outside of the board and just making sure that they're aware of where the county is financially. But if the board would like to do that instead, we can do that and make those changes.
And so was last year, the first year that you did that meeting?
No, I've done it every year since and before me, my predecessor did it. This year is the only year that I haven't done it yet.
And you did it because of the jail work you were doing.
Because it's most cases, it's just numbers. It's 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 where we're at, where we thought we're going to be at. It's 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 not a change. Now, we have changed the process. We Jen's using smart sheets. Typically, we wouldn't run that by directors that were using a different software anymore than any other software we get. And next year, it's going to be part of the new upgraded client anyway. So.
Would you utilize a smart sheet?
So we don't usually at that level would ask the directors to get their buy-in to use a different software.
But I guess where I'm at is I don't want to get in there and micromanage what you do. I just want to be on record saying that I want to make sure you don't tell another department that you don't have control over yes or no on their budget. It comes here and as long as that's not happening, and it sounds like that's not going to happen.
That is not happening.
I don't technically have a problem with however you want to.
Even to the supplemental, just.
But I do worry that I may not get to hear those discussions that could actually help me make my decisions. I I don't get as educated. So it's harder for me to make more educated decisions when some discussions have happened that I wasn't privy to. And I'm not trying to say that I was kept out of the loop or anything on it, but the more information, the better for me. And and so like I said, part of me is like, God, that would be awesome because you might be able to get them to say something they don't want to say sitting here. But in the same regard, I get to go into it without enough information because whatever they said, you sure don't want to sit there and tell me with the Zoom meeting on. So it it's kind of a double edged sword because they're still not going to tell me even if we don't do your meeting because we no longer have open Thursdays with nobody in the room where we can talk about whatever we want to talk about.
And I think there's.
So it's going to be the first budget year where the public is actually paying attention to the public or to the budget and us. And I think it scares the hell out of everybody.
Well, I think there's, we're talking about different kinds of meetings. So there's the annual meeting that everybody attends, the electeds and the directors. In the past, it's even included all fifty people working on the budget. Which is just more process, you know, where where we're going, the numbers, forecasting, that kind of stuff.
First year was definitely dedicated to the structural deficit the county was facing.
But the meetings you're talking about where they may tell her something they don't want to say here, vice versa. Those are one-on-one meetings usually asked for by the director saying hypothetically, what if I did this? What if I combined these? What if we did something different? What would that look like? What would it cost? What do you think? And a lot of times they'll use Jen as a sounding board, like, does this make sense? Because they don't want to.
That's why I said, I don't need involved in that kind of stuff. But if if a director has an idea that's like, you know, we can do this thing and might save us some money, but I really don't know and I don't want to be the bad guy and have to bring it up and I'd like that brainstorming to take place that I know would never take place here with the sumo.
Because when when Jen was hired, we had a lot of discussions when she was hired. And I'm not saying whether it's true or not because I wasn't here. There was a lot of carryover emotion that in the past, decisions were made behind closed doors. They were made after the meeting. And when the budget was presented.
By the finance person.
And when the budget was presented in January and the commissioners weren't oblivious to it. Or couldn't have been because when the budget showed up in January, it was different than what was discussed at the last meeting.
Well, I would argue there were commissions.
And so however that happened, people didn't like it. And so we have talked about that we need to be more open and communicate. And I think last year when changes were made to budgets like the sheriff, I think you directed and she asked you and she reached out and said, these changes were made at a meeting if they weren't here. So transparency has been something that we've worked very hard on and.
Right. And I think I I will only speak for myself. I think it's possible that because of the past finance director manager, whatever you want to call them, total total control of the budget. It has departments and elected scared that were revolving back to them. So I guess I don't, I don't know what conversations Mr. Zoller has had. I only know what conversations I have had. And I guess my whole questioning here was just to make sure that wasn't happening.
Absolutely.
And I feel confident in your responses that that isn't happening. And I feel confident knowing that my sources out there, if it does happen, are going to let me know about it anyway. So and you would probably know that too. So it it makes me feel more comfortable in the all around.
And it's why I I use, I I'm not oblivious to those those feelings. I knew them as an employee before I came into this position within the county, had heard the rumors and and whatnot. Is it is why I foster relationships to the degree that I do. And it is why that I use the tools, the programs that I use so that everything is documented. So if anybody feels something, they misunderstand something, you guys hear from it. I have documented proof on my end of what I've done and not done.
Jen presented that to you.
I did.
Budget is went through and gave you the printout of all the changes that had been made just because we're very sensitive.
I am very sensitive. I I know that they were, they had those harsh feelings before me.
And rightfully so, bro.
So I guess we're kind of, I don't, I'd were again, I'm torn on whether I want to give you guidance to go forward with your little brainstorming meeting. If you could quickly give me a rundown of what you're trying to accomplish in this brainstorming meeting. It might help me give you the yes or my yes or my no on that little quick brainstorming meeting.
Well, the the meeting that I was going to hold, I was going to try and put together the analysis of the budget that similar to some degree of what I do for the first meeting with the commissioners where you see that very high level view of it. These are the revenues that everybody's budgeted. These are the expenses that everybody's budgeted. This is where we're going and what we anticipate in the future landfill dollars, those types of things. This is the deficit that we're facing three years from now. Making them fully aware. They were kept in the dark for all of those years. And I feel that if people understand why they're more willing to work together as a team. And then to really let that kind of sit in and and start the open the conversations up for brainstorming of what potential revenues do you feel? What do you think going on out there? What proposals would you make if you were a commissioner in this in this position? Let it foster and build organically. Take those proposals that they have, document them, present them to the board. What I don't foresee out of this is proposals of cuts in departments. What I do see is the potential of revenue that would have to take years to implement. So then to start those brainstorming sessions and those thoughts going forward that might take a two years to implement, we get started now.
I I'm going to tack on more than that because I guess I would say your your ideas for revenue. The little raised tax red flag just kind of twitching over here. I would hope that some of them are going to say, God, I sure wish I had somebody to look at grants and see if there's any grants available in my department because I don't really know how to look.
Yeah, I think.
And for three years, Commissioner Christopher said, let's get a grant writer. And I haven't got it. How much money are we leaving on the table? That we don't even know about or nurses in the jail or or anything else. So I I'm I'm intrigued.
It was it was an idea.
I have a question. The meeting is at all directors in a room and we're having those conversations together for them.
And elected.
And elected, okay. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think having all the directors and electeds in a room so that that Jen is leading and of course, we could be in there as well or one of us is a great idea to set the tone and the stage of where the county is at fiscally. It was kind of like how we did the when we held an all directors meeting, I think before you were here, Commissioner Zoller out at the fairgrounds. And and I think that goes a long way.
Yeah, I I guess I just to piggyback there. If if one commissioner is going to show up, then damn it, I want to show up too. And then that defeats the purpose of it because now you have a Zoom. So I would hope that if we go that direction, no commissioner shows up so that we can allow them to have their meeting and be open. And then we get the openness and the honesty when it's presented to us, which the public will be heated.
And and that was that was my intention is is to be able to have a space that they felt safe exploring options and ideas.
Well, another side benefit, I guess for want of a better term, is only thing worse than the budget process is the pre-budget where everybody starts thinking it's going to be horrible. And it's bright. And I'm already hearing supposed rumors. And then I get calls from the union about furloughs and layoffs and staff reductions and service level changes. And I don't know how that could be being discussed by anybody when the commissioners have not had a single discussion about that and have not even seen the budget yet. So when we get everybody in the same room, sometimes we're able to get everybody on the same page. And it kind of pushes back on some of those free budget jitters because budget is a difficult process.
We're able to squash some rumors.
I am. I'm going to give you my thumbs up for your meeting. Let's test it. See how it goes.
Well, and also in addition to that meeting, I was going to propose to the directors and electeds on whether who wanted one-on-one workshops. So the prior years, everybody came in, as you probably remember, and they they sat down, they read their memo to you, you went over their their department budget and they left and everybody went through that. Last year, we tried to streamline some stuff. You guys didn't need to hear every department.
We were presented first, we picked through and said, we need to talk to them. Anybody we were going to make a change.
Yep.
They talked to those people.
And then they came in for workshops. I I had mixed reviews from departments or electeds with that process. Some wanted to be in front of commissioners. And so.
Even if we didn't change their budget at all?
To some degree, I I heard mixed reviews. So I was, because I heard mixed reviews and feedback, I was going to put it back in their court. If they wanted to be somebody who wanted to be in front of the commissioners regardless of any changes or not, then obviously I want them to be in front of the commissioners to be able to do that. So I was going to take that list, have that discussion with them, create a list, schedule them for workshops. And then for the everybody else would be just as we did last year. So kind of a hybrid approach where the board, if you thought you were going to make changes on something you wanted to discuss, you would, you know, bring those departments in. And then I would just combine those and then schedule those workshops out throughout September.
And it usually and and it can change with, I think you're in Jake's first year. It probably made sense to have in in Commissioner Zoller's first year to have every fund and department come in because it's basically new. But at some point, take when Marty was weeding past, I think he all said, we know what he does. We know, you know, they're not going to make any changes. It's and.
Well, as long as we see the budget in advance and I look over that budget and I look at it for the past years and I don't have any issues and I don't see any overspending and I don't see any other ways to cut. Unless you want to just give me a department update, I got nothing for it. Have a nice day. Thank you for your budget. You know, see you next year. It's only those ones. It's like, well, this line looks a little weird.
It's sometimes like.
And I won't cut it without giving them the invitation to come in and answer the question of why does this line?
And last year you had some come back and you said.
Depending on how many, yep.
And it's your call.
Yeah. And that so that was my intention and we don't have to do that. I mean, I was just trying to get a kickstart.
Questioning to that would be, I wouldn't ask who wants to come in and do a presentation until we know who we want to do a presentation. And then I would, I personally am not micromanaging you. I would say these are the people we want for to come back, but if you would like your name on this list, let me know.
So I I was going to do to some degree, that exact same thing. I would get a list of those because I don't want anybody feeling like they were left out of something. They have bad feelings or whatever in regards to myself, this position and their budgets. So if they feel they want to be here, I want to make sure that I hear that and then give them that opportunity. Now, if you were to say you don't need that department here, you have no intentions. If that were to be the case and they were on the list that wanted to be here, I'd call them, hey, they're fine with your department. Do you still want to come in?
Or even a nice email from us saying, thank you. We appreciate your budget intentions and we know where you're at and.
They felt bad last year. Judge has got like three dollars to spend all year, his entire budget. Three dollars, but he takes time away from his judgeship to come over here and report on his budget.
But the commissioners can't send an email like that. Staff would have to. So.
But we could direct you that we're good with your budget. Thank you.
Yes. So that would be my intention of of that. And that's how I would handle that process. But if they wanted to come in.
Why can't we reach out? Explain that to me. What am I not getting?
Individually, but.
Visually, but not together.
If we're forced to do it together, we'd have to do it at the budget meeting.
Right.
When we decided we don't need to talk to these five departments and then you would direct staff, the commissioners have looked over your budget.
And sometimes, sometimes there's around two and around three because if depending on the level of reductions, if you don't get there the first time through, then you have to call people back and and you've done that two or three times as well. So each year is a little bit different.
That's just it. I don't know that technically this year or the next three, we can remove anybody from the equation, even if we look at their budget and don't find a problem. I wouldn't sign off that you're good because until we get to the final number, nobody's good.
Right.
And we've often talked about, you know, in in with the commissioners, various commissioners over time. How's the best way to, I mean, usually during the budget presentation, they're telling you what they do. Was there a better time to do that, like at a department update? Most of us are here all the time. And, you know, is there a way to? And you know, is there a way to do it prior to the budget? First of the year, we're doing strategic planning. Everybody's gonna have to do it anyway to educate the commissioners on. Are there focus for the upcoming year?
Unfortunately, my opinion, every time you have a commissioner change, the first year of budget, you're probably gonna need to do a deep dive. What do they do? What does every employee do? Because damn it, even if I'm not sitting here, I want whoever's sitting here educated enough to make educated decision. So if that means a full deep dive, the every time a commissioner changes, they'll be as far as I'm.
I don't I don't disagree with that. And it's also why I provide, you know, all the handouts in these. Leading up to it to any candidate as well. So should anything happen, at least there's some um understanding and.
Well, I think it's important for Jen and I want you to know. We're hearing you. We've had conversations with you individually and hear about the process. And we're always trying to to adjust the process and be when we think we're transparent, be trying to be more transparent. And you know, if we were in a private sector, we'd be having these discussions in the boardroom as opposed to uh in the public room. But um they can be difficult. We're not arguing with you and uh we're just trying to understand.
It's hard when Zoom is on. It's hard. Because technically I have a concern. But I can't air it here because if the public hears my concern, then you get twenty seven Public Records Act requests. Which is what you're trying to stop to begin with. And it's not that it's bad, but you still get twenty seven. So it's like I I have an issue that I will bring up later and it may get resolved and I don't have to talk about it here. Um, so it's it's gonna be an interesting budget year with a zoom there, but in the end, I think it's good. I think the budget, the public paying attention to the budget for the first time can't do anything but help us. Even if one of those revenue sources years from now is a living lift. They're gonna see us going through the process and scraping every damn nickel. Uh, and in and or not scraping every damn nickel. So that they can make an educated decision when they vote for said. So all in all, I think it's good. Anyway, you have my thumbs up for the meeting. I don't know if you got anybody else's.
Well, if I can. You know, can I proceed as as planned?
Cuz I mean, it's not new. We've been doing it for a very long time. So unless you don't want us to.
Yeah, if and if there's an issue and you don't want me to proceed as planned, um let me know now so I can. Um, adjust and figure out how to go forward with if. Um, the best time efficiency for myself and ability to do that.
Meeting is okay with me going forward. I look forward to hearing what comes out of that meeting. And uh where we go from there. I'm still concerned about building on the process year after year and moving forward with some steps that maybe haven't been. Vetted with the commissioners for how that works for them. Um, so I would tread carefully there. Uh, and in the future going forward, I would like.
Pretty clear. I think uh we should move forward and uh and I think this is a really great idea. Especially the fact that we're gonna be zooming our budget meetings. The better prepared everyone can be and the uh the the better gin can help help those guys. We're better off we are. Sorry, I'm I've got one bar.
Yeah, but I just gavelled, yeah. Uh, where was I? Going forward, I I want to be involved in the process for making decisions. How we present budget design and budget, how we're moving with those directors. And so as you move forward with your your ideas of moving forward, like you said, build on it year after year. I hope you come forward to the commissioners and we'll have that conversation and and.
It would it would be my first department update every year, absolutely.
And I would say that for the most part she does, but there may be some. Uh, and I don't know, I'm not laying claim monotone, too many numbers confusing. And we're, you know, or we're taking notes and and it's like, the other day, are we gonna make a motion on the payroll? We already did it two minutes ago. Because I was in the middle of something. And part of that is us paying attention to what you're actually saying. And you may not get all three of us paying attention at the exact same minute cuz we're micromanaging twelve different things up here. So I guess in that comes down to the thumbs up, thumbs down. Maybe maybe you need to say, are you all okay with me doing this meeting thing and actually get that verbal? So that it alleviates this going down the.
I will make sure that I ask specifically.
And I think next year we can back to train up even farther cuz usually to begin in the year, she goes over the calendar coming.
Yeah.
You know, for the year. And I think early in the years, we know we'll have one new commissioner uh sitting in that seat there. We can, when we come in in January, February and talk about the process, that's when we can talk about any other changes to the process. So whether we wanna go back and do it differently.
I don't know if you remember a couple. But when we first started, people would come forward and ask for opinion and like no head. There would be no official um. It's just, I guess if nobody said no, that's an authorization. And and directors would go back and they, well, I'm not exactly sure whether I got a, so I try to. Make sure cuz you know, now I've heard two thumbs, you know, then three. But I I may not be here forever. So you guys are gonna have to. Uh, make this board, make a decision. And give you an answer.
And I will be here and I'm the border collie and I want that information and I'm gonna bug and bug and bug to fill my head to know I'm going right. So that works.
I think you have a yes. I took it as a yes anyway. Don't blame me.
I forgot the question.
Yeah, I don't. What day is it?
Forgot the question. I did wanna talk about the coroner.
Oh, oh, we actually have.
That's small.
We actually do have commission um things we need.
Jen did go out and um talk to a coroner somewhere. Yeah, sent a budget and had them look at it as a starting point, just a placeholder. We gotta have numbers in there to get the budget for the whole county. And uh so one she needs to know if you want.
Talk to a coroner in another county?
This was all presented to you back in.
Clarification.
Yeah.
Um, yes, I reached out.
Out to somebody looking for the job and asking what he'd work.
No, I reached out to other county coroners that were uh our same size.
At the budget, not the salary.
What was the um employment level? Coroner plus how many?
Was the coroner, this specific one that had offered um anybody who wanted to go see the department, how it was run. Um, was structured as the coroner. And then I believe she had just gotten a half part-time FTE.
So then the second part of that is um I I was asked by the board to draft a job description. I've done that and sent it to you or you've had it for a couple of weeks, I think. And so we know January one, you need a coroner, whether it be appointed, contract or or elected. We know we can't do the elected at this point. So we're assuming this is all for your decision discussion. That you're gonna want somebody to start maybe December first so that they're not showing up January first trying to figure out where their office is. Do they have an office? Do they have supplies? Don't they? Do they have a vehicle? Don't they? If so, where the keys?
Phone rings once a month. I think they got plenty of time, but yeah.
So. Again, what do you want us to do? Do we proceed with posting? Is it a contract position? I mean, cuz you know, right now it's only August, but pretty soon it's gonna be October and December. And then we're gonna be facing January.
So technically, we can either clarification, we can either have it a county. Director of coroner relations or whatever you wanna talk about. And in with salary and benefits, here's your hundred and twenty grand. Or we can go out for a contracted position, which could be potentially a lot lower than a hundred and twenty grand, correct?
I I did not, I did not do any estimated contract services. I had just reached out to coroner departments and got an estimate of what that potentially would look like.
Literally an FTE. Cuz I don't know that I've still got the answer on whether we can't have a contracted.
When you say contractors, like an independent contractor, which means we typically don't provide.
Benefits and you get this much money and you buy your own pencils.
And I think we've done it. We had a funeral home.
Well, we do now for forty grand, but I don't know. But it can't run through the prosecutor, but that doesn't necessarily mean the Board of County Commissioners.
So that decision can, that decision can, you still have time.
Okay.
The placeholder in the budget, which would be completely different under one scenario.
Well, yes, you you would be, if you're looking at it as an FTE county employee, you're looking at that whatever, a hundred and twenty grand.
It was roughly two fifty, yeah.
And and then a halftime.
Total budget, not.
Right, and then pencils and paper and laptop and and whatever. You would be in the comparable of your idea, my idea, and I'm not saying it's your idea. Um, you're the higher end of the market. So if we can do a contractor idea, it would be less than that. I don't wanna give up that this idea, but I would say go forward with that one just to make sure we have everything covered.
That's what I call budgeting conservatively.
Can we answer this question next Tuesday for you? Is that too late? I have a couple of phone calls I wanna make and then also Jake.
You're just looking for a placeholder.
Yeah.
For the budget.
Yes, just understand that every delayed decision also means a delayed budget process.
Can we still reduce that if we find something?
Do anything you want.
We've hired it.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're just looking at a placeholder of budgeting.
Well, she can bring something to.
With a high number and we can change our mind next week and go to a low number.
The only time the budget cannot be changed is after the budget hearing. And it changes to increase the expense.
Well, and then it can, we just have to have another hearing if there's still.
So your suggestion would be an employment, correct?
No, I have no suggestion at all.
Oh, I mean, the number, the number.
Oh, yes, I I would.
Made a decision.
Yeah, I I will always err on the side of budgeting conservatively. So that would be over budgeting um a little bit higher.
Cuz if you put twenty thousand in there for a contract. And then it winds up being two hundred and fifty thousand for an employee. Now we gotta find two hundred and fifty thousand.
That we're in the middle, yeah.
Have we reached out to any counties to see if they plan on doing contracted?
I need to finish having conversations with Skamini County. They had some great ideas.
I mean, obviously, Skamini has great ideas of contracting with us. So it must be possible, but that doesn't help our people out. That helps their people out.
No, I think it would help.
At the cost of our people.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna finish that and then I'll let you know.
Janet sent you that information earlier in the year. Do you wanna see it again or are you okay?
Oh, if we have the conversation with including Skamini County, we're gonna see it again.
No, no, I meant for the, she needs to put something in the budget this week.
Yeah, I still have that yesterday and I'm okay with that.
To you to make sure you're okay with whatever the.
I.
It's just a placeholder.
Put the one and a half employee FTE two hundred and fifty. That's about what I figured. Um, but yes, this this board's gonna have to come up with decisions on where they're putting these people. Giving public works time to rebuild that space, whatever that space is.
I've also heard two different versions and I'm not the expert in either one as to whether there is a vehicle available for the coroner. If it's not a contract position or if we have to figure out how to acquire one.
Why would the suburbanish, whatever that thing is, not be available?
I don't, I don't know that for sure yet.
We'll find out.
Are we?
I'm just saying we may have.
Apparently, the coroner vehicle is the contractor's vehicle, I think, is where.
This this suburbany thing that we have here on site?
That that's been used as an investigator's vehicle.
Used to be used.
Did you, yeah, once upon a time, I guess. I don't I don't know. I still need to have conversations.
Because, right, but my point is because because an elected. Turned it from what was appropriated to into something else does not mean that we can't.
I don't know that. I don't know that yet.
We're just saying that. Depending on the outcome of those discussions, there may be a need to identify a vehicle or there may not be.
Well, I'm not building my fleet department. I just spent three years downgrading my fleet department and saving a crap load of money. I'm not building it back.
So until Jen has that conversation, we won't know the answer to that. That can come later. So you're okay with replacing that placeholder in the budget for now so we can continue? And then, of course, it can be changed, depending on the.
As we refine it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's Jake.
He's gone.
He's gone. So do you have other?
I was just giving a thumbs up to the two fifty.
There is.
Do you have other stuff for the budget you needed to?
Um. WSU, but I think I saw an email from you. So long as that outlines, they haven't been able to read it yet.
He, they had some questions, but I think we're we're pretty close in there that you could use.
Close enough to sign a contract that should have been a place six months ago. We're getting time for next year though.
I just need to know what to put in the budget. That's all um and then.
I I would pencil it back at the hundred grand. We penciled it last time until we know a number.
Um, and then Department of Corrections.
Department of Corrections, yeah. Did I, we hadn't really had a discussion about that yet. I suspect we'll just look at actuals. From twenty-three as a starting for the new department.
That's what I've done so far.
As opposed to try and take some.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that.
Take actuals and then we can go from there.
I would take the actuals and then I would also get a brainstorming session on. Anything we know is gonna need to be added to that. As we go through the budget process, but yeah, start with actuals from.
That that's what I've started with.
Yep, no, I got no issues with that.
They did.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
I'd take any term of fan as a thought up here. Uh, discussion on First Amendment audit. So. I've sent emails to the prosecutor asking him to do a First Amendment audit trainings. Um, just like the rest of my emails, I've gotten no response. Um, I've brought it up to this board multiple times. I don't think people understand what the hell I'm talking about when they say First Amendment audit. Which is why I think it kinda goes in one ear and out the other. So I wanted to actually explain what First Amendment audit was.
Okay.
So it's Joe Blow Public showing up with a ballistic vest and a mask.
Yeah.
And all sorts of cameras and making you really uncomfortable, uh, and making you really nervous. And trying to go into your officey area and film. Um, so that you will eventually tell him he can't film him. Um, which is a violation of his rights. Uh, and or you call the police and the police throw him against the wall and make him give ID, which is a violation of his rights. Or they ask for a public records request and let you screw up that process. Which is a violation of law. Either way, these all turn into lawsuits. The reason they're doing him is they're trying to find counties that are failing to comply with the law and or the constitution. And hold you accountable through education of you writing the check uh for screwing up. Um. I still believe we need to have a First Amendment audit training. Uh, to all of our directors and all of our customer-facing receptionist-y type individuals. And um. WAC had a Monday meeting that went over the First Amendment audit that I have the videos of that are up for another month, I believe. Um, there were six hundred and sixty people or something that attended that. And um it would be my idea to schedule essentially a training day. Put it on the big screen downstairs. Mandate our directors and receptionist or what, half of your department comes to the first training in the morning. The other half comes to the second part. Because the other thing that became apparent to me is when the guy verbally asked for a public records request. He was told, here, have this form. Thankfully, he filled it out. If he wouldn't have, you would have been writing a check. Because a verbal request for a document is good enough. You don't have to have, you don't have to have an address. You don't have to have a phone number. And so if our employees are still. Not. Sure on that. We're gonna find out after we write the first fifty thousand.
So I've been thinking about it. We just have not talked cuz we haven't had the time. And that day being chair, my phone rang with questions. And so I walked through that day with people on the ground here. And also with the city police because there are responders. And they are very, very helpful. And we we even had a with Luca Taro, Officer Luca Taro. After the fact along conversation about exactly what you're saying, what happens. And how to help our people understand how to handle them. And they committed that they would love to work with us and come to our building. And they committed that they would love to work with us and come to our building and help hold some sort of meeting like you're talking about for training. And possibly human resources would be involved in that, uh, through Casey or Rob. Um, so we have lots of help and I think that's great that you have the WAC video.
If I haven't already, I will send her the link to the video. Uh, hopefully commissioners watch it. I think, uh, quite potentially a. A presented. Presentation would be better for our staff than local law enforcement's opinion. But I would also want local law enforcement to piggyback on said video, so I wouldn't want them necessarily hosting the meeting. We need to be training our employees.
No, they're willing to help with anything.
Questions can be asked.
And, and Sheriff Department because they did respond to.
And, but in the same regard, I would also say that some of them might actually need education. Uh, to keep us, cuz that's usually who gets sued is the law enforcement side of it.
Okay.
Um, you know, show me your ID. No, what's your name? Gandalf the Grave. You know, as long as you don't lie to them, you're not obstructing anything. I haven't broken the law, I'm not giving you money.
I know.
Um, so I will forward that. I would like to. I would like in my head and I'm open to suggestions, I would like to have it literally as a training day. Where half the day we go over the First Amendment audit, watch the video, and we watch WAC's video on public records requests.
Okay.
And then the second half of the day, the other half of county shows up and we do the exact same thing.
Okay.
Because the same thing with open public records laws and public records requests, there's been one training in three years.
In order.
Think that's enough and I don't know that every attendee was a county employee.
For the sake of work hours and efficiency, could we do the same thing on the west end? So that those employees don't have to travel up here and so their local law enforcement can be involved.
Long as you have a conference room that can attain.
And they can.
Half of the employees and then when they're done, we funnel the other half in.
Okay.
At least we did our job and we show risk, the county risk pool that we're trying to do our job.
Yeah.
To train our employees on the risks that are out there. And then if something happens, we try.
Well, and for their own safety to know how to respond in a situation like that. I, I appreciate that. And their.
And I would apologize for everybody when I keep complaining that we need to do a training on First Amendment audit. That I didn't realize that nobody knew what the hell that meant. So it was probably going in one ear and out the other without an explanation on what I was talking about. Um, which probably caused no second vote because nobody knows what else to talk. Um, so that's my bad.
So, are you picking dates and working with Elise to coordinate or how do you wanna do it?
I, I won't do anything without approval of the board. My first thing is I wanna send this video to staff. And have them send it to the commissioners.
Okay.
Take a look at it, see if you approve of this format. Uh, we won't be giving legal advice.
Okay.
Uh, we will just be saying, here's a video you get to watch. Um, there will be no legal advice given. Um, just the video training and then the cops can give their perspective on the situation and we'll go from there.
Send us the video and then put it on agenda for.
And we have thirty days, so it will be, hopefully by next week, we can discuss some dates. Um, and set it up. I don't care, I'm, I'm open, but Thursday's a good day, so, yeah. I, I would do it in a room that has the most TVs, whether that's both rooms. If we can hop it on Zoom in both rooms and people can load up both rooms. Yeah, so, um, I would, I, okay, so I would check with her to check the Thursday, cuz she didn't use half her Thursdays last year. So I would check with her to make sure she needs that Thursday. If she does, put it on a Wednesday. I don't wanna put it on Fridays, nobody's here on Friday. In, in, because I kinda want a sign-off sheet of who attended and I would kind of like that notification that. Joe Blow attended the First Amendment audit and the whatever training, throw in their personnel file. So we can prove later down the road that they attended. I think that's only good for us if there's a court case.
Okay.
Against Joe Blow. Um. Anyway, we'll go from there. I'll send the video off.
I see it.
And then working some dates. Oh, did I already send it to you? Uh, see, there you go.
I've got it. Thank you.
And then, yeah, just Facebook First Amendment audit and you will see how bad it could get. So that guy, I'm gonna turn my mic off for a minute from all you people on the. And there's so much money to be made off this county.
Don't tell him. Okay.
Um, and that's, no, that's all I had on that and I very much appreciate everybody taking that seriously. And that's all I have. Unless you have anything, I will make a motion to the Senate here. Not like I gotta go anywhere, but.
So I will.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion and a second, any discussion?
Um. I guess it doesn't matter. I was gonna say officially, I never made a call, but you could just adjourn the meeting without a motion, so it's fine, go ahead. No, I said if there wasn't any conversation, I would make it.
Ah, I just read the last part.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't making motions.
It was one of those things that I was reading something else.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn and then Jake already seconded it. Now we're official.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Bye.
I'm.
About three o'clock on the button.
Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you.